I'd like to call the January 7th meeting of the Concord Planning Board to order. This meeting is being videotaped and also recorded, but if you want to make your own recording, feel free to do so, but let us know so we can make arrangements not to disrupt the meeting. I'll start with, before our first item on the agenda, I'll start with an announcement. The town, as you may have heard, is working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on a long-term vision and plan for the Thoreau Depot Business District right around the Depot Station. And that project has already gotten underway. And at our next meeting on January 21st, the MAPC will be presenting their results.
For Walden Street?
Oh, sorry, on the Walden Street visualization study.
Do you know Walden?
Oh, that's right, okay, sorry. Fall back, alright, so there are two different things that the MAPC has been doing with us. So one, if you recall, in the last year, there was extensive discussion, and even, I think even the previous year, discussion about 59 Walden Street, so it's the former TD Bank Building, and what to do with that building and what streetscape changes might occur, you know, if it was redeveloped. And so the MAPC actually did a visualization study of that site and will present their results. So anyone that's interested in that Walden Street area would like to attend that. Then, on our following meeting on February 11th, another team from MAPC will be working with our planning staff on a public workshop. So instead of having our normal meeting, we're going to have this public workshop on the Thoreau Depot project. And it will have, you know, a presentation of why we think it's important to, you know, do development in that area, and the timeline and process for the project. And then there will be opportunity for the public to provide input on the vision and the types of restaurants and stores and other things in the area that could benefit the area, and the kinds of mixed use that could be developed, transportation needs, and any other changes to make a vibrant neighborhood. So I really hope that folks will come out for that. I think it's a very important initiative for the town over the next couple of years. Okay, so with those announcements out of the way, let's move to our 7:8, 7 PM agenda item, which is the recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals for application of Charles Audi to amend a special permit that was received a little while ago on Section 7734, 77313, 116, and 118 of the zoning bylaw for relief from parking design standards at 143 Sudbury Road. So, do we have someone representing the applicant? So would you please identify yourself and...
Good evening, I'm Paul Mahoney from Mahoney Architects in Concord. I'm here with Charlie Audi, the applicant as well. So I worked with Charlie back on the previous special permit, so he asked me to help him with this one as well. And I think the planning report gave a good summary of this, so I'll just briefly describe what is happening here. First thing, I try to work this pen. It's got a button, there we go. So up on this little area at the top right of the plan, we've got Thoreau Street, Sudbury Road here. There's existing stacked parking, and originally the layout for this was for eight spaces, four feet, four spaces wide by two deep. And the reality is that Charlie can fit 15 cars in this area, so the application is requesting to modify this to now be five wide by three deep. And that would be managed through attendant parking. So Charlie would have one of his employees parking the cars there and moving the cars. Customers wouldn't be using that area themselves. So it'd be used for people who are dropping their cars off to have them serviced during the day or employees to park there. And the reason why this is kind of necessary is that the way a lot of people use Charlie's service station is to drop the car off, take the train, go into work, come back, you know, at 5:00 or 6:00 PM, pick up the car and go home. So in other places, you might leave your car for an hour or two and figure out when it's done, but because of the convenience of the commuter rail, a lot of people leave it, come back much later. So there's kind of a need for this additional storage there. So that's really the brief summary of this. I noticed two typos in the application.
Yeah, one was pretty significant.
There's, there's, one, two, three, four.
Consistent.
Consistent typos.
Yeah.
That's what I get for doing things late at night and not wearing my glasses.
No, it wasn't you, because I just read my memo and I described them as eight by 12.
Oh, okay.
Yes!
Because I thought that Charlie was starting to repair smart cars when I read this.
No, I had mistaken meaning, 12 feet. But on the site plan from St. Anne's Gate McNairy, they're 15 feet deep. And I just double-checked again, the average size depth of a car is 14, 14.17 feet.
I thought it was 15.7.
I used to think it was longer myself, I just Googled it.
Okay.
And you can't, you know, fault Google, so.
That's what I thought I Googled last night.
We can compare notes.
Yeah.
Anyways, the practical reality is that he's often been able to fit three deep there, so that's kind of how they fit in. And then the other typo I just noticed, I think we have a count incorrectly noted on here. Previously, we were showing 16 spaces and we're adding seven spaces to get to 23. And you were referencing 21, and I'm not sure where that came from.
Once again, it was late.
Yep, no worries. All the other spaces that we showed last time are not changing. So there are, there's a handicap space here, there are spaces here, and there is a space here next to the building. So when you add all of those up, the additional spaces that are proposed, it comes to 23.
Okay, questions from the board? Well, I have a question, I mean, what if you have, I mean, I doubt if you have three stacked Suburbans in this thing, you know, they're 18 point something feet long. But regardless, you know, different cars are different lengths, and what happens if, I mean, is there a restriction that the cars may not extend beyond the end of the lined area?
Currently in the staff report, there's no restriction, I think, but that's a valid argument that it should definitely not extend much further than that because of the driveway.
Because if they did, they would impede the driveway, right?
Even if it extends, it will affect my customer gathering.
Right.
So that's why we would not do that.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, I don't...
So it may be a simple solution to say, you know, cars shall not extend past the...
The lines?
The, well, the edge of the, the edge of the building immediately.
Yeah, that seems, it's a reference point, at least, yeah, I mean, I just thought the lines themselves provided something. Those are the, that was the main thing that occurred to me.
I think, didn't we receive a public comment about the...
We received a letter.
Yeah, the handicap accessible parking space.
That the handicap space location made it difficult or dangerous to, that was what the letter was alleging, to get to the building.
That it's right near, you know, entry and exit.
Right.
To, to the space. And I was wondering, is it possible to, to move that space or swap spaces with the one that's closer to the garage on the right there?
This one or this one?
Yeah, that one, yeah. Would that be possible? Then...
Yeah, I think it would affect the ability to use this space. But the other thing is, it's kind of a question as to, you know, we originally located here because the entrance is here to where people come in, and this seemed to be the more direct path to that. The reality is, there's lots of traffic here.
Right.
Yeah.
No matter where you are, and there's a lot of backing out and forward from these garage beds all day long. So this might be technically look more convenient, but I'm not sure it's necessarily safer. I think it would also affect the count on this side, because right now, you know, you need this space next to the parking area.
Yeah, but I mean, you are gaining a whole lot of spaces here. I mean, maybe you could give one up if, you know, and then leave a little bit of space more over there.
Right.
I do think that it is a lot less traffic on that end than over here, which is right next to the entry and exit, yeah. It's just something, you know, because you're gaining, what, seven spaces? Right? I mean, do you need all seven, or?
On that side, it's really dangerous, because if that handicap is trying to get out from his car and go, there's the garage where we do inspections together. So every 10, 15 minutes, car coming in and out, and you get the air pump at the corner too, which people, they come to get their air.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think if there's any other space. I mean, clearly it wouldn't work in this stacked parking back here, there's just no way to not make it, get in the way of everything else. Well, two plus, it would prevent the, I mean, they said attendant only.
But somebody would be coming in and out.
Yeah, it would just be a mess to try to do that. And then this in the back left corner, that's a space?
Yes.
But it's not wide enough to be a handicap space? Yeah, there at all, yeah. Does look quite narrow, and getting back out must be interesting. It's hard to think of, I don't know, I can't see anything right off the top of my head.
For the handicapped car?
Yeah.
No, I mean, you know, and the question is, how often is it used? And the alternative is, would you have more usage if it was more accessible? I don't know. Because it's probably not used a lot right now.
Right, but then that just gets back to, I mean, the point of having one is to be, allow people to use it, yeah.
So where is it right now?
It's right down in the bottom right corner there. I mean, it does set off, you know, the right amount of space. And, and this is sidewalk around here.
Can I ask the applicant, have you ever had a handicap person complain to you about where, like, of a problem?
I don't even have a handicap person go on board there.
So, so no, you have never had a complaint?
Well, I don't know else, how else to resolve that, so I just... Did any other comments from the board? Okay, any public comment on this special permit application? Okay.
Well, I just had one question for clarification. So is, is it because this type of use gets a certain number of parking spaces and we're making a change to that? I just want to know kind of why they have to come in front of the board.
Well, this reconfiguration of parking based upon the special permit that they previously got, you know, they need to get their special permit changed.
Or the configuration of it.
The configuration doesn't meet the requirement.
Right, it's...
Their original special permit.
But also it's stacked, compact parking.
Right.
It's a very unconventional approach, and they have to have attendant-based parking in order to do that.
And previously, they, they had to get a zoning relief because they did not have enough parking spaces.
For the usage.
Right, but now they will have over the required amount, but they still have the, the parking layout, which is the stacked layout, which needs to...
Approved.
Okay.
So...
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we, let's see, this is, we recommend
Yeah.
to the Zoning Board of Appeals to support the application of Charles Audi to amend a special permit under Section 7734, 77313, 116, and 118 of the zoning bylaw for relief from the parking design standards at 143 Sudbury Road.
Okay, any discussion? All right, then, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
And we are in time for our 7:15 PM item, which is a site plan review, the application of the Shover Brooks School under Section 118 of the zoning bylaw to construct a new 5,900 square foot, two-story structure on an existing playing field, connecting walkway, and related site improvements to the parking lot and student drop-off area at 200 Strawberry Hill Road. So who's going to represent the applicant on this one?
I will, my name is Thea Masu. I work for DSP Architects, we're the architects on the project. And we will also hear from the applicant, Danielle Hurd, who's the head of school.
Okay.
And brief comments from Michelle Crowley, the landscape architect, and Sean Malone, the civil engineer.
Okay.
So, we can just get this off the table.
So I'll be brief, I know that there's quite a bit of information in the report. The building itself is about 5,900 square feet. It is intended to be, intended to be a two-story structure with fiber cement siding, standing seam metal roof, and, thank you, that's a good, that's a good view. And the goal is to achieve net zero energy, and that will be achieved through eventual solar PV panels on the, covering much of the roof, as well as what's currently designed through the mechanical and electrical systems as a very high efficient set of systems. The barn will be primarily used for music and dance performances, as well as some kind of overflow space, which Danielle can, can speak to a bit more. There will be some flexible meeting spaces, staff offices, as well as a small staff kitchen. There will be no addition to the current enrollment numbers. And just wanted to point out, we've met separately with the fire department, the health inspector, Elizabeth, and Concord Public Works, just to kind of proactively capture any comments. So trying to make sure we're, we're working alongside the town. Would you like to say a couple words about the reason for the project?
Sure, sure. Again, I'm Danielle Hurd, I'm the head of school at Shover Brooks School, and we're particularly excited about this possibility, because it allows us to continue to build on the programming that we have, really have in place since the concept of school. The idea of having interated curriculum where students are connecting across different disciplines and have the flexibility to learn in different environments, academics, athletics, the arts, and also a real appreciation and celebration of the natural world, which has been part of our curriculum from the start. So this space with the flexible classroom, office space, small performance space will allow us to enhance the program opportunities that we've had, but it's just been squeezed and trying to do it in our existing facility. But will also allow us to have great location and that connection with the natural environment on our campus, which our students really use as an extension of the classroom. So when they're doing their field observations and studies, our hope is that our students are graduating from our school with an appreciation of their environment, but also knowledge and having to be real stewards of the natural environment as well as the thing that this facility can help us build.
Thank you.
Are you sure you want to talk about, about...
Sure.
If you want to, if you want to talk to the site plan?
Would be included in these, in the reviews?
Yeah.
I think that's just the most important. That's construction.
Just a small...
Location.
Not to worry.
We have, we have, we have... I should please sort of settle on the landscape drawings.
Yes, we should. Okay, do you want, I can just put it on as easel?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, they're actually set up right there.
Oh, that, these are, they're on here.
Just a nice... She can put it right in front of the screen. Shoot, no, she'll put the cover, you can just put it right in front of the screen.
Put it right in front of the screen. If you slide that, slide that, open it, no, about the top.
Up here.
Yeah, gotcha.
So this is a site plan pulled out to just show the parking. Most of the parking isn't changing at all for the barn. This is where the barn is going to be located. There's quite a bit of students crossing the, the parking lot, and so we've decided to take out a few parking spaces and create a raised island, a raised crosswalk and a landscape island to slow traffic down. So that's the only work happening up in this area as far as the site plan. And then the, the landscape's quite simple, there's a rain garden that's capturing all the water from the barn, and just, just a landscaped area in between the wall and the barn that's going to have, you know, some play logs on there for outdoor classroom or just some play. And so it's quite simple, this is the connection from the school to the barn that Thea just described, and, and we were thinking about relocating parking for the, the spaces that we were taking out of adding up here, we're going to talk about later tonight if we could, maybe if they're not, if we don't have to do that, we could maybe hold off on doing that for cost reasons. But that's what this is showing in here, so that would be the only changes to this main parking lot. And otherwise, everything else is existing.
Shaun, your board behind that is the civil...
Yep. Okay, for the record, I'm Sean Malone, of Consulting Group, civil engineer for the project. And just take a quick step back, just orient a little bit, I'm sure you're probably familiar, but the Strawberry Hill Road is out in the front here. So this is the, the main school building, so the proposed Discovery Barn is tucked in the back here. This is the parking area Miesh was just talking about. There's a rather large retaining wall that goes around the parking area here. So the base of the Discovery Barn will probably be eight to 10 feet below the level of the, the parking here. So all that will help to mask and screen the, the project.
And the retaining wall's an existing condition.
It's an existing condition, it'll stay as if, we won't be touching that. We'll be, the barn will be about 20-plus feet off of that. The staircase is already there as well? The staircase is here as well, yes, exactly. So with respect to stormwater and utilities, as Miesh mentioned, we'll be constructing a new rain garden that'll take all the runoff from the new barn, all the impervious, the new impervious area, and we'll do that by using a stone drip strip on the downhill, slow portions of the roof. This will capture the runoff and then bring it to the basin, we'll, we will infiltrate back into the ground. In the parking lot, with these changes, we actually, including this parking, we have a net decrease in the pervase area. So this parking lot right now drains to a basin over here from the previous design and construction. So all this will essentially remain existing. We will be having a couple more catch basins, where we're adding this, this speed hump, if you would, the crossing, so that this is a level ground. So we'll have a couple catch basins where the, the water will be cut off from where it sheds now. So the net effect is, we'll be, no increase in the runoff from the site, which goes down to Engineers Pond down here. Utilities to serve the barn will be through the connector to the barn, so we'll have water and electric telecommunications within here. And then to get to the sewer, the septic system, so to get to the septic system, which is located in the parking lot here, we'll have a septic tank with an ejector pump to pump up into the existing sewer line and connect into the existing system. Stayed in our application, this project doesn't represent any increase in the student enrollment or faculty, so there's no issues with the capacity of the existing system. We're proposing a, currently there's 156 parking spaces on site. The requirement under your zoning is 120 spaces, so we have a surplus currently of 36 spaces. With this project, including these five spaces, we would have 150 spaces. So we're still in excess of 30 spaces on site. In addition, the school also, on occasion, uses the upper portion of the field over here for overflow parking. They can accommodate up to 40 additional spaces there for special events. Water and sewer has identified the existing water services as something that may need some upgrades, so we're discussing that with them. Currently, the water is served by an eight-inch main coming from Strawberry Hill Road that comes into the building here, and then branches, a branch is just outside the building. So we're talking about water and sewer, about what we can do to make any changes there to, to meet their requirements. I think as Miesh mentioned in, in the report, we met with the fire department. Their one concern, or one of their concerns was access to the building from this upper portion. And currently, there's three handicap spaces in this loop. As part of this project, we'll be eliminating those handicap spaces and making that a fire lane dedicated for the, the fire department access. So I think that gives you a...
Where will the handicap spaces be relocated?
Relocating them over here.
Right there?
Yes, yep. So we still meet all the ADA requirements?
Actually improved, it looks like an improvement in terms of access.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, there's no other questions?
I actually had a question for, based upon the planner report. First of all, you had stated 120 spaces were required, the planner's report says 115, and then there's a statement about if there are non-school events, 38 spaces would be required. I assume that would be above and beyond if it's, because it's segregated? Well, I know that there could be shared parking and overflow parking, and reserved parking, and, but I mean, they would need to apply for, for relief.
No, so the building commissioner, for just the school, including this, there's no required, requirement for additional parking because of this project for the school?
Right.
The school is based on number of teachers and classrooms, which is not changing because of this project. And the building commissioner has determined that the school requires 115 parking spaces.
Right.
If the performance center was just to be, you know, rented for a non-school function...
While school was in session?
Well, just for the performance center, it would be 38 spaces. So that's why the report says there needs to be additional information on whether it's going to be used for non-school events. If, if it's used during the same time that the school is going on for a non-school event, then, then 115 and 138, they would not...
You mean, 115 plus 38 gets us up to 153, which is just over, and they would need parking relief?
Correct.
I mean, it doesn't sound like it's a catastrophic situation, but...
But...
But that is the open question that's in the planner report.
I don't think they do need parking relief. They, they...
Right, it seems like they...
They have, in the previous projects, they have over, approved overflow parking on the field for, what was it, 20? I think it's 40 spaces.
Yeah, so then they're all set on that front, okay. I just wanted to, because it did seem like there was almost a point of suspense in the, in the planner's report about whether or not there were going to be, you know, events that were non-school events, so...
I just have a, a general comment about this proposed new building, that it's kind of sad to see, taking up some of your undeveloped space with the new building. And I'm just wondering, and especially like when you say, oh, it's going to give, you know, it's going to give our... it's going to give our kids access to the natural world, or it's like, it's by building this little structure, you know, it's by taking, by eliminating some of that natural world with this enclosed structure. It's just, it's sad. I'm just wondering, like, I'm wondering, when you were thinking about fulfilling the needs that you have for the structure, did you go through a process of thinking about like, and I'm sure you have, and I'm wishing you could tell me about it? We've thought about our existing space. We've thought about how to meet these needs in every possible way with our existing space, knowing that this existing open space, playing field, which is part of the natural environment of our campus, is so valuable to us and to, you know, the town, our future students and all this. Because in a way, like preserving that area and not building a structure would be communicating to your students, if you could tell them that story, like, we actually, we're going to put a building here, but then we realized that it's more precious to preserve this as open space and that's what we decided to do. So we came up with this other creative solution for how we're going to still do all these great things in our school. I don't know, I wish we could all, that could be the story that we all tell. But would, do you have any reaction to that or?
I hear you. And it actually is part of the story that we have been navigating. We've actually spent several years investigating all the possibilities and have delayed and delayed and delayed and tried to be as creative as we possibly can with our existing footprint. The story that I sometimes tell, maybe I shouldn't tell in public, meaning that we even repurpose our existing phone booths from the 1970s and 80s at the, the students are using the small, you know, storage as well as, you know, spaces for small, when they're recording, that they move into those spaces.
That's great. No, you should say that out loud, wouldn't you, maybe? Why not do that? We don't, we don't use phone booths anymore. So that's great.
We've tried to be as creative as we possibly can and we just reached a point where it feels like creative is really, really putting a squeeze on the student experience in the program. And so we, but yes, I completely agree with you that it's, it is an important message that our students need to know that we should be as creative as possible with all of those uses.
And one thing I didn't mention is that the fact that we've added a porch to the east side of the building that is open porch, the covered walkway is also open there, but you know, no, not enclosed structure. And the porch programmatically is intended to be kind of an extension of a classroom and there will be, you know, some counter space and ability to kind of get the kids' hands dirty. It's right next to the garden that's, that's there. It's, you know, within very short walking distance to the wetlands and the, you know, surrounded trees. The property is, how many acres? Eight or so. It's like, we're trying to create a little moment that hopefully doesn't overpower the, you know, the natural environment around it, but instead creates a closer connection to that. Yes. And, you know, alongside of that, I'll say, we're trying to use as many natural and kind of honest materials as we possibly can with the architecture, so.
Yeah, and the landscape as well, right.
Even the spaces that Miesh was highlighting, we really tried to think about it. That we can just take advantage of the natural barns within the landscape to create kind of amphitheater settings. Or we can use natural logs instead of plastic concrete, so how can we really celebrate?
Is this going to be natural gas heating or is it going to be electric?
It's all electric.
All electric, okay.
Other questions from the board before we move to public comment?
Just in the planner's report, it said we should come back, get information on the issues raised in the report. The only issue I saw was this potential question about daytime versus non-school hour issues. Were there any other issues or that I missed?
No, as the applicant's been talking, I've been adding just a couple of notes to add as far as the incorporation of sustainability. I don't think it was highlighted in the material that most of the roof was going to have solar panels, that the use of the natural logs outdoors for seating and that will be an all-electric for heat.
Yeah, I mean, I think like the more you can incorporate, like, that's learning, those are learning tools as well. Like, I think that's, that's amazing.
But I think it should, it should be noticed, noted in the site plan whether there will be outdoor, there will be non-school
Functions, yeah.
Performances or not. I mean, it's, it's only 150 seats. The building commissioner has determined that that only requires 38 spaces. So it's not a, it's not a significant impact to the parking.
You guys have many non-school functions. I know I've been doing some non-school functions there, but do you have many?
We don't have many. We're certainly not getting this whole day.
Okay. And you don't anticipate, you don't anticipate a change in that usage with this new facility?
For non-school?
Yeah.
We haven't made plans for that at all.
Dave, can you hit someone?
Yeah, you mentioned that the goal is for the structure to be net zero, which I think is great. But you said that's, in the, in the future, once some solar panels are able to be installed, I just wondered if you had a timeframe for that?
Yeah, hardly.
Yeah, we're, it's, it's partially depends on funding and finding a great donor for that, to be honest. But the goal is to have it, it's, it's going to be, everything will be circuited and wired for those PV panels from day one.
Okay.
And so they'll be, you know, it'll be ready to receive that as soon as possible.
And we believe we're on track for it now. We are, we're in some work to identify what that would be and have worked with them before for the solar array that we have, the 100 kilowatt solar array on top of our gymnasium roof now. And so we'd like to work with the same company and they've given us the indication that we'd be ready to do it. And we believe we're on track as long as we stay on budget to be able to do it like that.
Good, that's great.
Are there any trees coming down?
Yes, seven.
So one of the other things I should point out with what Miesh was talking about with the parking spaces over there is that's where I think most of the trees are that are planning to be dropped down.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And so we're, we should talk about if we can eliminate those parking spaces. That is where the trees were coming down in order to mitigate some of the parking required. I guess not requirements, but what we were taking parking spaces out, we were adding. That was a spot where we could add parking near the project. So that's where, that's the only place where trees are coming out.
I mean, it just seems, given your plans empirically, that, you know, today you don't have a parking issue. And I don't understand why you would really need to construct those.
How often do you find yourself not having enough parking spaces? Like, once a year at graduation?
Graduation is maybe that factor, that's maybe four times either, or we just use the overflow parking.
You guys thought about like composting toilets? I just was reading this like consideration of like waste on the, for the permitted use of the site. Have you looked at that at all?
We looked at it, but we ended up going with a more traditional, just kind of low-flow plumbing fixtures, that kind of thing instead.
Cost probably. I definitely would support saving those seven trees. And then having the temporary parking on the field when they need it. That's just what we want to do.
Yes.
Nobody, nobody's looking for these spaces, so.
I didn't know if there was like a form, like, why would we do that? Okay, so it's like we're deciding.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody okay now with moving to public comment? I know that we did receive one letter from the public from Carlin Reed, Winston Road, expressing concerns about the potential traffic impacts of the project. And so I didn't know if there were any other public comments? Yeah?
Carlin Reed, 83 Winston, just to lose data a little bit more about that. There was some data in the application about the traffic flow, but I didn't understand the context where that data came from. 170 cars in morning peak, 129 cars peak in the evening, 20 cars queued on Strawberry Hill Road in the morning and 46 queued in the evening. I live in that area, so this is part of the way, how we get to our house. My concern is with the traffic impacts of creating a performance facility. And I don't think it's been addressed at all in this application. I don't know if that's something that the board is interested in looking at, but Strawberry Hill Road is kind of a busy route and I have to believe that putting it in an entertainment facility there is going to increase it.
Any other comments from the public? Yes?
Susan Bates covered me. I just had a question about if you're putting the building on an existing athletic field, are you planning to create an athletic field somewhere else on the property?
Okay, well, let's just catch all the public comment if there are any others and, yes?
Janet Miller, 1647 Main Street. I just want to say as a member of the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee, it's great that you're doing a net zero building. I was just curious to know whether you're planning ground source or air source heat pumps?
Okay. And then any other comments or questions from the public? Okay, so then we have these three questions and/or concerns, one about the trap, potential traffic impacts.
Field.
The, the playing field, whether there's a compensatory playing field planned? And then the ground source or heat, air source heat pumps? Any comments from the applicants?
Well, if I may, just with respect to the traffic, there really would be no change over what's happening today. As they've stated, the performance area would be for school use. If it were to be used for something other than school use, it would be off school hours when the typical school traffic would not be part of it. So there really would be no change in traffic.
Okay. And then about the playing field?
Sure.
So the, the playing fields actually are, it's a part of our playground field. So that, and it's not a regulation-sized soccer field or anything like that. We have two playing fields that we do utilize for athletics. So this is, it's a small corner, just a place to base, but not a kind of a way to replace.
So it's not something you're going to need to replace in your programming? Okay. And then about the heating and cooling systems, HVAC?
So we have a DVH mechanical electrical plumbing engineers on the project. And I actually don't know if they looked into using ground source or air heat pumps. I think we may have looked at that as an option, but it was too expensive. But I don't, I can't answer that specifically. I know that whatever we're doing is, makes the most sense and is the most cost-efficient for the, for the school. And we tried to, you know, they're pretty good at thinking outside the box and trying to come up with different ways to use alternative energy and things like that. But we ended up not going that route.
I mean, I'm curious what, what the systems are then.
Yeah.
What is, you know, because it's electric.
It's got to be one or the other.
Sure. So I'm Brianna Pinheiro. I'm the owner's representative for the project. So I'm not the mechanical engineer of records, so I'm saying this more off the cuff. But what we're using in the, in the barn is a mini VRF system. Some of them are split systems, some of them are, you know, multiple indoor units connected to a single outdoor condensing unit.
Air source heat pumps.
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of separated from them, so I didn't know if I should interject, but...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Brianna, what you're with?
CSL Consulting. We're the project, the owner's representative for the project.
And what is your last name?
Pinheiro.
P A?
P I N H E I R O.
P I N H E I R O.
Yes.
CSL Consulting?
Yes.
Okay. So the barn will use air source heat pumps?
Okay.
Okay. I guess we can now, now you were suggesting that we really are not completing our deliberations tonight because there's still additional information to be gathered?
No, at this point, I think you've got all the questions answered. So it would be just continuous to the next meeting for you to review your decision and conditions of approval.
Okay. Because I don't know if we need any other guidance to you in establishing that, but...
It sounds like to me that everybody's in favor of granting the special site plan. And so I'll draft the decision based on this report with the information that was gathered tonight to include in as your decision.
Everybody on board with that?
Without the additional parking spots.
Without, correct.
Without the additional parking spots.
We'll submit a revised site plan eliminating those spaces.
You don't have to do that before. I mean, you can if you want.
I think we'll plan out.
Okay.
All right. Well, then that's good then. So we'll continue the hearing until our next meeting and...
So you actually need to move and second and continue because it's a public hearing?
All right. So someone make, I motion to continue the hearing?
I move that we continue the public hearing until our next meeting, which I think is January 21st.
At 7:00 PM?
At 7:00 PM.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right. See you at the next meeting?
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're ready for a 7:30 PM public hearing. So I can open the next public hearing. The application of Lemonade Development Company under the sections 5.318 and 11.6 is zoned by law for a special permit to allow the construction of a common driveway to serve two lots on land located at 2160 Main Street. So who do we have representing the applicant here?
Do you have a lead? Sorry.
Yep, here you go.
My name is Paul Kirchner. I'm from Sam's Game of Nari. We're the engineers on this project.
Okay.
So I'm representing the applicant. So I'm sure you're at least somewhat familiar with this application, but it's for a common driveway at 2160 Main Street. There is an existing house located on top of this hill. It's pretty much centered on the property. So the Aspet River is located to the rear of the dwelling, to the north. You have Main Street to the south. There's riverfront area associated with the Aspet River as well as buffer zone associated with all the wetlands around here along the river on this side and the other side of Main Street. Of course, that's more of a natural resources issue, but it's relevant and really constrains what we can do here. So what we want to do is utilize the majority of the existing driveway as a common driveway. As you can see, it's, it's extremely steep, as I touched on before. We did submit a proof plan that showed a driveway coming up along here, but it would require over 100 feet of retaining walls on either side, extensive earthwork right along Main Street to add another curb cut on this, along the section of Main Street, which is already quite busy. So we want to use the existing curb cut. We're going to plan on modifying the driveway a bit to reduce the amount of pavement here, also make it more navigable for people who live here, but also emergency vehicles. We are providing a turnout area here for a fire truck. So I had met with Walter a lot of, early in December to discuss the turnaround. Is it adequate in terms of where we're putting it? We want to use the grass pavers so that it just looks like lawn, but it has the strength to support the fire truck. In the planner's report, I know that Elizabeth had identified his concern over the use of the type of grass pavers we had proposed. I contacted Walter via email on Friday afternoon. He replied late on Saturday, okaying the use of these grass pavers. I basically went over, you know, all we can, all we, all we really have to refer to is what these companies are providing us. This is how strong it is, so take it for what it's worth. But GrassPave says it can support 15,000 PSI, which is well over what would actually be required for this. The report says 60-year design life and it's plow safe. Now, obviously, if you're a plow guy, it's being a little bit reckless. They're going to tear up your asphalt driveway anyway, so they... They're going to tear up your asphalt driveway anyway, so they have to be careful. But ultimately, he agreed that this appeared adequate for the use. So we have our turnout. Slight extension of pavement here, of course, to provide access to the proposed dwelling. We tried to limit our disturbances as much as possible, and that was really a natural resources issue. So separate utilities for the proposed dwelling. We're going to take the electric off of the existing dogs here. It's just going to sort of run alongside the existing electric service that goes to the existing house. This is, again, more of a natural resources issue, but we're doing extensive plantings to mitigate the disturbance that we're proposing. So a little bit to the rear and then on either side of the driveway. Private onsite septic. We did get some comments back for the proposed dwelling, but they're very minor. It's really just a matter of shifting the system over a couple of feet. We did get a permit for the existing house. So I believe one of the recommended conditions is that it's, that's the first thing that gets done, is the replacement of that existing system. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's the gist of this.
What is the grade of the driveway now as it's proposed?
The proposed driveway is 10%. So right now, it's about there. It's a little bit flatter right now coming along this stretch, and that's because it's sort of, it's more of a 90-degree turn. Obviously, it's still 90, but we curved it more. So we had to go a little bit steeper, but it's 10%. That's the maximum that's allowed for everyone's driveway, but also for the common driveway.
Right, and I thought we recently had a subdivision plan that, that the, they proposed 10, and we, the fire chief asked for eight. But then that was on a downhill sloped road that the, and it was a road because it was a subdivision. But I just was curious, I guess in this case, since it's just a driveway, 10% is adequate? Okay, well, I mean, the comments speak for themselves, so, right.
Provide any issues or concerns? You didn't raise any of that stuff.
Any other comments or concerns?
It's an existing driveway, and we're just saying, yes, we can use it for two.
Well, they're making some modifications, but there is already a driveway there.
And I did receive confirmation from the assistant fire chief that the use of the, I'm going to call them plastic pavers, after reviewing all the manufactured material and specifications were adequate.
What are they?
They're.
What are they called?
Concrete grass pavers.
But they're called grass, but it's.
So it's, what we're proposing is the plot, it's grass paved too. That's what it's called. I don't know what grass paved on it, but it's grass paved too. We have a detail down here, so.
Down the farm left corner.
So.
You can have grass grow up in between them.
Right, so they put down road base, just like the rest, and then they.
It's pervious.
Right, so they put a plastic ring, and they fill it with sand, so it has that strength. That's where you get all the strength.
It is not concrete. It's just that's what's in the report.
Typically, they're concrete, but these are plastic.
Right, so when I originally met with the assistant fire chief, he said, you know, I don't like the sound of plastic. Riverwalk used concrete, can you use that? So when I sent him the information for these plastic favors, I also sent him the concrete specs, so we could compare them.
Yeah.
So that's why it cites that. But this is the turnaround here, so on this side and the low side. So it's kind of like a diving board off the edge of this hill, retaining walls, but.
Is the advantage cost or their recycled material or what is the?
It looks a lot nicer.
It looks nicer. Are they green or they?
So you just apply grass on top.
It's real grass.
So, yeah.
Okay, oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
So it really is, okay, you don't even see anything.
Right.
Sorry if I missed this, but how did the fire chief get comfortable with plastic?
Because they saw the spec sheets.
But.
Yeah, I sent him the brochures and really just went over his concerns and tried to, as I sort of mentioned before, they say 15,000 PSI. That sounds insane to me. They originally had stated 5,000 PSI, which is more reasonable, but that's equivalent to what the concrete papers provide. And that was really the center of what I was trying to argue.
I'm sorry if you already said this, but why are you proposing a pervious surface there versus just adding more asphalt? I mean, that's for, I'm wondering, is it because you have to, because of stormwater requirements?
For aesthetics.
So.
What motivated them on this?
It's natural resources. We had to limit the amount of impervious coverage as much as we could.
Because?
Because we're within the riverfront area, where there are very strict requirements. That's why we had to do all this extensive mitigation all over the place. So we've been over this with them, but it's just all about balancing areas. And it looks nice.
You want to see more?
So on page four of the planner's report, in 11.6.3, where they're talking about the pavers, it says, "Fire chief should not raise any issues or concerns with the proposed common driveway so long as the applicant uses concrete grass pavers for the turnaround."
But that's where the new information about the plastic ones came in.
So that's going to change and be?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other comments or questions from the board before we move to public comment? Okay, public comment, any public comment on this? Yes?
Hi, Julie McFlair, 2128 Main Street. Here and have spoken with my neighbors who couldn't be here because they're not feeling well. They want to make sure that I brought up concerns. We have a common drive that's in a budding drive to yours.
Yes.
And just to understand, so, you know, the way, the way that this notice came through had us asking questions about how many additional dwellings? It seems like in this case, you're only adding one more dwelling, so.
Yes, so this is just one.
Single family?
Yeah, one single-family dwelling. Months ago, we had submitted a plan to conservation that, or natural resources, that was proposing two additional dwellings. We had to adjust our NR, so it's been a long process, but it's just the one additional dwelling.
Okay, great, that's really helpful. Because the main concern for us is butters, it's just like what a lot of other folks have brought up, which is traffic. And what this map doesn't exactly show is the visibility on this curve on Main Street is really tricky. And it's supposed to be a 30 mile per hour zone, but people are going 50. So adding more traffic there, I'm not sure like what that means for, you know, the people who live there and us. So those were our main concerns. And then I haven't been receiving information about this, even though I think my count isn't better. I've been getting it only through my neighbor. I wonder if there's a way I can sign up for on my list to make sure I get the town planner report on things like this. Because basically, the neighbor just knocks on my door all the time and hands it over and says, are you going to a meeting? So I'd love that information if possible. Another issue that came up is, I know you mentioned briefly about the sanitation system. Could you clarify a bit more about that?
Yeah, so it's just standard private onsite septic. So one for each dwelling. The system that serves the existing dwelling crosses this property line that we've created. So that one needs to be replaced right here, and we have one, two over here. They're just standard septic systems, nothing unusual about them.
And I guess I'm just curious about like where they are in relationship to the steep grade on the rear side of the property. Because perhaps if people are familiar with Topomac, it's clear when you look there, exactly what that hill is like, but it's, you can't even walk on that hill. It's very, very steep. So I just wonder about the proximity to that.
Yeah, it's up top where it's flat-ish. So that steep slope really is in this area. And then on the front side over here. So the system's proposed right here where it's fairly flat. There is going to be some regrading just associated with building the house and creating a small yard for them, but it will be in a flat area.
And you have a sense that it will not seek to that.
Right, so it, the system will conform to type of five requirements. The system to serve the proposed dwelling is, has not yet been approved, but the adjustments we need to make are extremely minor. And there are requirements related to how far away can, do you have to be from those very steep slopes? So we have the initial requirements.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, then, yes?
To answer the, the one question for, for anybody who's interested in receiving information on the town's website, if you go to the main page on the left-hand side, there is a button that's called notify me. And you can sign up and be notified for any board and committee in town when things get posted to their websites. You can sign up for when agendas get posted, when information gets posted. You can, you can sign up for any of the 40, 50 committees that are in town. But this is the address that you didn't receive the legal notice.
That's correct.
So it was mailed to, to this address. The public hearing legal notice was.
Yeah, we didn't receive it. Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
So you'll, when the board renders their final decision and it gets filed with the town clerk, you'll be receiving a notice of decision as well.
Okay, very helpful.
All right, so much like the last time, unless there's further comment, I think we want to continue the public, the hearing and.
I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing to January, the meeting on January 21st. I think we haven't had a discussion as to whether people are in favor or not, but not hearing objections to the plan under the assumption that we will review to approve the town planner's recommendation.
Okay, okay.
Decision.
Time, time, 05?
January 21st at 7:05.
Wow.
Okay. Okay, all right. Although I think Nathan already did, but that's all right.
Wait, 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 Nathan?
He actually was first. Yeah, yeah, so, okay, so all in favor? Okay, all right. Talk to you next time. Okay, so now we're going to move on to administrative work. This is, we have a draft recommendation letter to the ZVA for our application of science development permitting for the variance of special permit for the 34-unit planned residential development, 1448 Such Main Street. So how do we want to go about this? I mean, we, I don't know how many, I hope people have had a chance to review the draft letter. I did make a few copy edits, proofreading kind of things, but I also had, I saw some issues that I think merit further discussion and confirmation with the board in terms of whether we actually have consensus on these points or did agree to them being in the letter. And maybe we need to work, work through those so that it can be finalized.
So I'd like to suggest you go page by page, paragraph by paragraph.
Yep.
Any comments on page one?
Yep, I will, I will do that.
I mean, I personally only got to look at this right before, just given when we got it.
Well, it's true, we only received this midday today. So I do understand that it could have been difficult.
Which, that, that is an option for the board. You are making a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals will open the public hearing Thursday night. I do not believe.
They will complete their deliberation.
Render a decision at one meeting. So, you know, if the board does feel that they need more time to go through this, if there are some larger issues that need to be further discussed, they can inform the board that you're, you're still working on your written decision and would have it for their meeting in February.
I would love to endeavor to get it done today. And that's a backup plan, that, that would be my mindset?
Is it okay if we, I'm just thinking we won't get to anything else perhaps? Is that okay, like if we?
Well, let's see how we do. I think actually that the issues are pretty tightly, you know, in one part of the report, that most of the reporters, content that we've been through many times. So it may not take as long as it might seem. Let's see how we do. It's only 8 o'clock. The night is young compared to our last meeting. God, how much time do we have? Okay, all right, so, starting on page one, I entertain any comments that people might have. I did have one myself, it was just simply a clarity issue, which was the second bullet of the bullets list toward the bottom of the page. I just added a comma, which, grading of the site, comma, which requires removal. I know that that's important, but yes. Any other comments on page one? All right, page two. I had one thing here, which was just to create a real numbered list. Totally trivial. Page three.
I know we're not weighing in on the, on the earth removal in terms of our recommendation. So I guess there's nothing that we can add in here other than the facts about what she has in there. Hopefully, right?
Well, there's the conditions on when it can be done, when trucks run.
I guess, I guess what I'm thinking about is qualifying it by saying, you know, does this amount of earth removal warrant a, this particular proposal? But it's, hopefully, that's what they will deliberate about.
That's what the Board of Appeals will.
Right, without, without any input from us. Okay?
It does seem that in this plan, we're not really weighing in on it.
No.
Either one way or the other.
Because we're not asked to.
Right.
And, but I think it's a significant thing, but, but that's one of the specific things they will handle.
Just like, you know, they, there's a mention later on that they're seeking a variance, but there's, we don't weigh in on.
Right, exactly. I think, I think those two are hand in hand about the suitability of the site for, based on those two things.
Yeah.
Okay. With that in their capable hands.
On page two. Moving, moving on. Well, moving on to page three now, yeah. I had another tiny thing, which was to eliminate the, in the, next to the last paragraph, next to the last line, total of three three-bedroom units. I just got rid of the comma after the first three and put a dash after the second three. So three three-bedroom units, no comma, okay.
I have my first comment on page four from there.
Yeah.
This comment about the applicant will be presenting on December 18th, 2019.
I had a comment there too.
So that meeting ended up being, they required to be continued because they did not have a quorum. So it was, actually, they will not be presenting till tomorrow night. So that should be changed.
So you'll just change the date?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not an open-ended change, okay.
I have a question about wording on this page that's repeated elsewhere. Where, Elizabeth, where you say the outside consultant offers additional comments for various recommended conditions of approval. And that's similar to a couple other places where you mentioned that. Are we assuming that the Board of Appeals will go back in the record and review those conditions and adopt them? Or that, is it just part of the record, it's not necessary to list them as conditions? Are we weighing in on whether we think those should be formally adopted as conditions?
Well, the conditions are there and later in the document.
But not necessary, I'm not sure if they're all, maybe they are. Did you pull, every place that you say, you know, on maybe three or four different issue areas, you say that Aspet also has, you know, a lot of other stuff they said, they concluded. Did you pull those all in to this document, or are they just that, these other bits?
So I, I. So I, I, I attempted to pull in.
Dead, okay.
As many, some of them, so for an example, the traffic consultant.
Yeah.
One, it, not the consultant, in the traffic impact assessment, one of the recommendations is that all signs meet MDC, you know, code requirements. So that, that's already stated on the plans. It's part of the plan, so it doesn't need to be referenced as a separate condition. Or that, you know, they have, you know, stop, you know, appropriate stop lines or, you know, snow be removed at the corners when it blocks site. So those are all things that are already referenced somewhere else, either in the plans or in the document, so.
So you went through with the E that they're somehow they're in here or they're already over in plans or, but they're not just like hanging loose somewhere? We're not losing track of them?
I've attempted not to lose track of them, but I can.
No, no, no.
I can always go back through them again.
No, I'm not suggesting that you do. I, I'm just understanding the process. And so, that sounds great. So let's please continue. I have no other comments on this page.
Okay, I have a comment, which is the paragraph that starts in a memo dated December second, twenty nineteen, the Public Health Director notes that there's out-of-date information in there? Cause I don't believe that the, you know, they're, that it's still a ninety-bedroom system, right? It's a smaller system at this point.
It, it is a smaller system, but those revised plans have not been submitted to the Board of Health?
I see, so when you say adding one bedroom to the current design, that's the current as submitted.
As submitted.
Though we, I think, okay, but the rest of it is, the rest of the plans that we've seen would imply a system that would be not at that limit. Okay, so I'm just trying to.
So I can clarify that, you know, that the thirty-six unit plans.
I think that that would be good and that subsequently, you know, two units have been removed, which could affect the results, so.
And a, a statement can be added, the, you know, the revised plans should be reviewed by the Public Health Director.
Right, to confirm the, or to. Okay. Page five. I had nothing. Page six.
Hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I did not have time to review much of this before this meeting, so.
On page six, I, I see. Elizabeth, you have for diversity, you know, that although the applicants' projected sale prices below that figure, planning board recommends that the overall square footage be reduced with more duplex units, et cetera. And I think when we talked about it last week, we were like, do we make this a modification or we just leave it out? But did we, did we, but maybe just to add some flavor here, or like, what, what do you? Like, I, I wasn't sure when I got to there, like, what we were saying exactly. I mean, sorry, where are we?
We are, in the, I think you're talking about the section ten, two, three, diversity of dwelling units, and going down to the paragraph that says the project consists of twenty-six.
Yeah.
Single-family dwellings.
Thank you, I'm sorry, that's the last sentence of that paragraph. I mean, I, I'm totally fine with keeping it as it is.
I mean, that's our recommendation is the, to.
As opposed to deciding whether to make it a modification or to just take it out. But we get to our plans otherwise in the modifications zone, but let's move on.
Because, well, yeah, I don't, I, it's unclear to me how, like, nitpicky, well, I guess Matt is very nitpicky, but we should be, as, but as I'm reviewing this, I just had a comment on, on back on page, page five, sorry, and I don't know if we wanna get into the weeds in this way or not, or skip to like the, the key points, but we just have up, up in, on page five and the last second paragraph, you know, that says, you know. Basically it's saying we're generally supportive.
Yeah, it's toward the top of the page.
Where did they go? Sorry, I lost it.
Believes that with some mod, recommended modifications and conditions of approval, this alternative form of development preserves open space, provides, which is basically straight from the.
Oh, right, is, is in general, is in general support of the proposed PRD, I mean. I, I missed last meeting, but like that sentence seems a little bit generous, in my opinion. So again, I don't know how much that matters in the grand scheme of this, but that, that sentence stuck out to me. I think it's more so if conditions are met, we are generally supportive.
Right, or, or what I was thinking, and I think it, it might dilute the recommendation, is that we're generally in support of a PRD there.
Yeah.
But it has to be the right one.
And that's kinda how I read it, right?
Well, no, cause this says, in general, support of the proposed PRD.
Yeah.
Of the, this is this.
I see.
You know what I'm saying, so.
We're in support of a PRD.
But then the, the rest of the paragraph is basically.
Qualifying.
Qualifying, yeah.
But.
But you leave with that sentence, I guess, so. Again, I don't know if this, in the grand scheme of things, matters, but. I don't, if I were Z, I wouldn't want the ZVA being like, oh, good, you know, we're good.
Right, it was.
So do you, do you want to change it?
Yeah, cause we, this is our chance to change the wording if you want to.
Oh, I, I don't know if we're talking about two different things. I'm talking about the language, the last sentence on page six, is that what?
No, no, we're back to page five, Haley took us back.
Page five.
Page six.
We're talking about the, the second full paragraph on page five.
Okay, so overall.
I would say overall, the planning board is in general support of a PRD and the denser development within, so just changing a, a PRD and then.
A PRD development on that site or something like that?
At this location?
At this location. There you go. Okay.
Then, then that allows us to kind of, the, the.
And then the remaining.
Maybe that paragraph can be specific to this project.
Right.
Can we, can we say, since we're in support of the, the PRD with modifications? Oh, that's what it says. Oh, sorry.
I think you'll agree with what we just suggested.
I don't know, I think a PRD is supposed to.
Well, I would say that, we would say with the.
Wait, I'm sorry, which sentence?
PRD approach to development at the site, basically.
Fourth line down in the full first paragraph.
Is what we're trying to, I think that the first, this first sentence is trying to kinda say, this site is well-suited to a PRD form of development.
If it's not right.
Maybe, maybe that's the, maybe that's the way it should say. And then the planning board believes that, that, you know, this site is suited towards a, to a PRD form of development. And that with some recommended modifications and conditions of approval, it improves open space and all that stuff. That's really, I think, what we're trying to say there. Okay? Does that work for you?
So we're going with the planning, overall, the planning board is in general support of a proposed PRD at this site and a denser development within walking distance.
Not, not a, I guess, like, I would leave the word proposed out.
I would leave the word proposed out.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and then with the conditions of approval.
Yep. And then I put, I, I would suggest putting this proposed project.
This proposed project, yeah, now you can, now you can be more specific. Yeah. Okay, good. I think that, that actually helped. Okay. So now, back to page six in that paragraph that started with the twenty-six single-family dwellings. What I was thinking of doing there was, you know, that sentence that talks about the one point five million? I was just gonna qualify a little further and just say, based on current sales data, new residency, single-family construction sales prices average approximately one point five mil. Sound okay? And then down a little further, where it says, to be a little clearer on what we're saying in that last sentence, that recommends that the overall square footage of the units be reduced with more duplex units or a triplex unit, comma, along with the inclusion of more one-car garages to expand the projected price range. Okay?
Just a question on the square footage range. How does that sync with the bulleted list above on page two?
Let's see, there were some living square feet areas versus the gross floor area, so. No, okay, so these are both gross floor area and they should line up.
Yeah, the range below is much, a small, is much smaller range.
Let's see. Why is that?
So one is gross and one is living.
Is it? Oh, okay, living space, yes, living space for range, yeah.
Which excludes unfinished basements and garages.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So does that address your comment in that paragraph? Match changes?
No. But, I, my, my comment is just that, is this a mod of feet, like, but I'm not sure if my comment is valid. Is it important for each criteria that we, we make clear that we're either saying what they propose is adequate or that we're proposing a specific modification?
That's what we're saying, is, well, right, and in this case, we're recommending the change.
Okay, and so it's gonna be carried down into the modifications section?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, okay, let's.
All right.
I guess one thing that's not necessarily clear in this paragraph is that.
Nathan, can you?
Oh, sorry. One of the things that's not necessarily clear in this paragraph is that we discussed that the diversity of price is, you know, it's a function of the available units. And sure, they're saying seven hundred and ninety thousand is the low end, but if there's only two units that are that size, and we kinda get to that, we're saying we want there to be these other small.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we should say it more directly, cause we kinda talk about the price range here, and then we talk about the units here, but we don't really make the connection that, that, that at this point in time, we don't think there is enough diversity in size to facilitate the diversity in price.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how we.
I don't have an immediate answer how to say that, I, I mean.
Well, but that's what we gotta do, we gotta come up with an immediate answer.
I mean, to me, the, the.
Well, we have to.
Although the applicant, like, by saying although the applicant's projected sale prices below that figure, I think we are eroding what comes after that, I guess, as, as, as that being our point and recommendation. Because are you basically saying that the message doesn't come across for why, why that's important?
Yeah.
To me, if you, to me, if you took out although the applicant's projected sales prices below that figure, you would strengthen the rest of that sentence, I guess.
So you're saying remove which, which?
Like, although the applicant's projected sale price is below that figure, like, to me, that implies, well, we're just being nitpicky and we want it below one-five.
Yeah, but, I mean, the previous sentence is almost, I, I would say it makes it weaker, because the previous sentence is saying, that you're, they're saying, hey, their units are two-thirds of the price of the, you know, average single-family new home being built. And then we're gonna say that they continue to reduce this further.
I, I, I mean, I said before, I think it's somewhat problematic to have those estimated dollar figures in there in the first place, because, to your point, it makes it look like they're cheaper than the average price, which very well may not end up being the case. And it, it moves away from the, the point that most of the size and that the, the bulk of these units skew toward the higher end, which moves away from the diversity of price. So you can show a range that could be completely fictitious, and it falls below the, the median price. That's irrelevant, because you, you wanna look and see.
Right, so would you like to just say that?
Ninety percent of the houses are in that one point one-five mil range. I'm not saying that's the case, but just for examples, argument's sake, is that. But then they, you know, have ten percent that are well below in that seven hundred and ninety.
Right, right, so.
That's not really diversity of price, and I think that's what we're not really, we're not.
Right, so you wanna, well, maybe in the last sentence, in that last line, instead of expand the projected price range, is basically to, like, reduce the median price or the, the average or something to closer to, you know, see what I mean?
Provide more units at the lower end of the range.
Right, to, because the.
It's a good way to say it, too.
Yeah. So, you know, basically to lower the median price within the proposed price range.
Sure.
Okay?
Do you have to read the last sentence completely, please?
Okay, well, all right. Although the applicant's projected sales price is below that figure, the planning board recommends that the overall square footage of units be reduced with more duplex units or a triplex unit, along with the inclusion of more one-car garages to reduce the median price to, more to the center of the range of projected prices, something like that.
Can you say provide more units at the lower end of the range?
Yes.
Or to, yeah, to generate more units at the lower end of the proposed price range. How about that? I, that's clear to anybody, yeah. Okay, we all right? Okay.
Could we add a sentence there that says no affordable unit, or no units will be affordable units?
I think, isn't that in the report already?
I didn't see that anywhere.
There was a description of how the site evolved, because it originally said thirty-six plus one affordable, and then now it's been changed to thirty-four with no affordable. So that is noted in the report.
Although, I guess, it might be worth adding, as I mentioned again.
Is, it, where, where is it in the report, other than in the?
Yeah, it was right at the beginning, I believe. Up where you, if you look for thirty-six, you'll find it, I think.
I just searched for affordable, so.
Okay, got it.
No, but I didn't find.
I see two.
Really?
Oh, yeah. I, I might be searching. This is in the.
Oh.
This is in kind of a.
Affordable, no units will be affordable.
I just wrote that. In my notes, well, don't worry, it's track changes, so when I send it to you.
Well, okay, but I know I read that this, yeah, I read it somewhere.
Maybe it's not, maybe it's not the word affordable, maybe there's a different adjective.
I think maybe it just said there were thirty-six units.
But Elizabeth has a comment about the necessity or, or not of that.
Yes.
At, at this point, you can add a sentence stating that the project is at the basic density and that no affordable units are required.
Good.
Okay.
If that's not there already, then I think we should go for it.
You can add it again.
Yeah.
Well, we should probably say they're, just cause it, and also they're not, they're not there.
And this is especially, it is, it is because, right. Okay. All right. Are we on to page seven? I just wanted to change duplex to duplexes at the first paragraph next to the last line.
Where are you, what number?
Right there up on the screen.
Right above, yeah, duplex or du, you know, make it either duplex units or duplexes, right? More duplexes.
Duplex or triplex units.
Or, yeah, duplex or triplex units, that also works. Sure, just put an S after unit. That also works.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
This is up again for maybe ease of reading for the ZVA, but like, would a table be better to just illustrate the diversity instead of writing?
Hell, you're gonna have to speak up for this end of the table.
Um, I'm just wondering, like, if, I think you even had it, maybe, but, like, does it listed, listing out the units, unit types and count in a table rather than?
To, to make that a table?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I'm taking requests for any comments, I don't have comments going down through, like, page eleven at this point.
I'm on page eight, I have one on page eight.
Okay.
And I just add one thing, while we're on the table subject, making, uh, the, there's, um, more on page six just above it, maybe make that all into one table, the square, uh, square foot figure along the count. Yep, yep, that, just make all of that into, to, to one table, exactly.
Alright, so I heard page eight, somebody had page eight?
Um, oh, God, M, M E?
Yeah?
Um, so the language includes neighborhood parks in, in what describes as active recreational use, so I think um, I don't know why we say the proposed common open space is not for any active recreational use. Um, like, I, um, I would just take that as a hint out, and say the planning board leaves up the creation of one point one two acre park is a benefit to the neighborhood. Or you could just say they propose a one point two acre neighborhood park.
Well, I mean, what we're trying to do here is, you know, uh, cover off on each criterion. So, you know, the criterion is land which is to be developed for active recreational use, including playing fields, boat launching, playgrounds.
Neighborhood parks.
Okay, so
They are proposing a neighborhood park.
Okay, so, so are we okay with that then? Just strike the first sentence?
Perfect.
Okay. Next. Anything on page nine? Going once. Page ten. Page eleven. Okay, page twelve. I had a comment under H on page twelve, I just rephrased a little bit to say the, uh, revenues associated with this development will likely not be significantly different, or will not likely be significantly different, but the two doesn't need to be there.
Did we?
To be or not to be?
Did we deliberate on that and determine that we, and, and do we believe that this would not be be different?
No, that's too strong, that's saying it too strongly.
You meant you, I think, what I'm trying to remember the point you raised in the last meeting on cost, the, the one thing
Well, yeah, we did raise the, the, that there's a affordable housing burden
Yeah.
being placed.
Uh, we don't know, it's a model of development.
And that the schools' impact was not, I mean, so those were the things, we really didn't come up with the, you're right, that, what we did lay out was, um, that there really wasn't any information about sort of public services fire and EMS and all that stuff, but that from a school's perspective, it seemed like there, the results could be potentially roughly significant, roughly equivalent, it was hard to tell.
Yeah.
And then from the point of, but what there was, was clear was, from, uh, the impact in terms of the additional um, affordable units would need to be constructed to keep the town within its forty B limit, was higher, and if the current costs estimated for replacing those units, it's, you know, around five hundred thousand dollars
Yeah.
additional cost.
If I may, I'd suggest that the towns, I, I think that that was an excellent point you raised in the meeting and plays into our consideration overall. I don't think that, that a, the additional cost that will ultimately be borne by the town to stay below the ten percent limit is a direct current town cost driven by this project.
No, it's not, I mean
But I, I don't think that we really had any information, just even looking at school costs, we really had any information that would lead us to make a determin, determination one way or the other, that, I think that the first sentence here, that we were not provided any information on the, on the direct costs.
And so that we don't make any determination on this point? That seems actually probably accurate, it's more accurate than what's written here, yeah.
So the only, the only, um, I don't know which meeting it was, um, the board, um, discussed as far as the school age children information that was provided, as far as the other PRDs
I mean, you could say that we did look at these things, but didn't come to a strong conclusion on
I'm not recalling it specifically, so what information did you have?
So we had the survey of the PRDs in town that showed that there were seventeen school age children in seventy-five units of PRD housing. However, I think that it would be easy to assume that these PRD units would tend to have more school age children per unit than we have historically seen, just by their proximity to the school, the size of the units.
And we
But, you know, these are all very, very fuzzy, very fuzzy considerations, I mean, I think that it's very fair to say, we can't really, I mean, we don't have anything that's strongly telling us that this is gonna be more expensive, but we also don't have anything telling us strongly the other way.
That's my, that's my view, so I would just not make a, I would not make a, um
I think that while we, and you could say in the report, we reviewed the historic, you know, school age children in PRDs, we, you know, considered the possibilities of necessity of replacing affordable units, um, but we did not, you know, come to any real strong conclusions about any cost impact one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay? Alright.
And so we're not covering the affordable, where are we covering, covering the, uh, affordable unit?
The affordable unit?
That we've lost, basically, that we need to make up.
Yeah, but I mean, that is the case of any, any base density PRD.
But I think Matt was saying that he, what Matt just said, he didn't include it in what?
Yeah, we did, we did look at that, I, I wanted, yeah, she will say, we looked at the potential impact of not, you know, affordable units that need to be done to meet the town's, um, threshold, but we didn't really come to any strong conclusions about the relative cost of this, this development, right? Bottom line costs.
We don't have to put a dollar figure, let's say
Right.
That there is a
I'm sorry, I can't.
Sorry, we don't, we don't have to put a dollar figure, we can just point it out as a
Consideration.
As a consideration, I mean, as you point out, any development would bring that with it, and
There are more units.
Right, exactly, so, you know, you couldn't do this indefinitely and not, you know, run afoul of the ten percent, so that has to be a consideration with each additional development.
As far as any, the development of any basic density PRD
Correct.
Will have
This effect.
Just, yeah, will have this affordable issue and effect on the, okay?
Okay, um
I just have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we on twelve still?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I don't wanna introduce anything new by any means, one thing I was curious about under K, um
Where are you?
K.
Okay, maybe this is more of a question for Elizabeth, but I just, I don't know if you're, if the planning, um, team uses like math, the mass GIS database at all, but I had, had looked at the GIS layers that the land is on, and according to the mass GIS database anyways, like, a lot of the property is categorized as land of statewide or local importance, um, I mean, again, I don't know if that fits in the town, town conquered open space plan, which is what's referenced here, but, um, didn't know if it was worth noting that, like, technically, from a GIS perspective, like, those layers are categorized in that way on the property.
What, doesn't, what, I'm just going off what the natural resources director states, that it's not identified in the urban plan.
More, yeah, I mean, I guess it's more of like a philosophical question for like anything that we think about doing, like, looking at how those GIS layers are characterized.
What, um, what's included in that determination?
Typically.
I, for a mass GIS, I don't know.
Okay.
Right, but the criterion is about our town of Concord Open Space Plan.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was like worth mentioning anywhere, but in general, and, and this
I mean, I think if we don't know what the significance of it is, then
I mean, I know in the solar world anyways, we're talking about, like, it has a certain categorization on the GIS layers, no development, or, you know, that's like kind of what we're moving towards in a way.
Okay. Can we go forward? Oh, yeah.
Can we go back before we go forward?
Back, wow, okay.
Um, back on page nine.
Okay. Shoots a ladders.
Yes. I just really wanna get clarification on this, so on page nine, they have under A, B, and C, and the applicant is proposing that the condo association own the common open space, but basically this is saying that we're proposing that it should be held by, uh, the town through the select board.
A restriction.
Right.
Not, not ownership, a restriction.
Right, that it, in perpetuity, that it maintains as a, a park open for the public, is that
That the restriction is, yes, but the town will not take ownership of it. So the, the example is, um, Comerford Road PRD, that open space area was actually deeded to the town, and the town took ownership of that land.
Okay, and based on our recommendation about the, uh, pathway, the ten to fifteen foot pathway in the back.
The corridor.
The corridor, thank you. That will be included in that restriction, based on what we're, what we are suggesting.
Correct.
It would be, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that
Okay.
Cause it, cause it does say that the public open space restriction for the park.
Ah, so it should be for the, it, it should be for the
For the public open
Common open space areas, or what, the, the two, because right in the back, there's gonna be a restrict, a restriction as well, right? So the park is identified as that area in the front? That is a good catch, I think.
I just, I, I'm, my reason for bringing it up is going back to, we had this discussion last time, is there, on the condo docs, they're definitely going to label these as they have them here, with condo, our common open space easement one and easement two. And these two, they have listed as open space easement one, which will be under something completely different for the condo docs.
Right, so it's the common open space areas, so we should say that the common open space areas should be, okay?
So that corridor should be labeled as, as a, as a portion of common open space easement two.
Yeah, and I think that's a good catch, rather than just referring to it as the park.
Okay, let's, I think the modification is a good place to do that, for tentative, for
Yeah, but park is too narrow, because park is just
So I agree with the change you're suggesting, and also saying we can reinforce that in modifications, that the corridor shall be included within the restriction.
Can we establish what the restriction is, though? I think what we're talking about is the right of public access, right? That's a restriction.
The open space restriction?
Yeah, so I don't think we are necessarily asking for
Oh, so that would only be on the park.
Public access to this buffer zone or to the open space area that's in, in the middle of the houses. But, but they act as a restriction, so, my concern is that these two spaces are not part of that, so they would not be held in the restriction. So if the condo association decides to do something separately here, and for example, if the corridor was considered part of the open space and not part of the common open space easements, and as the condo docs are written, the condo association could then go and say, oh, our neighbors wanna utilize that space. It's not part of the restricted space that's in the, that's, that's covered currently, so they could utilize it in a different way. Okay, so, so a restriction that's on a requirement to maintain open space, not public access.
It's a public open space restriction.
How is that public open space restriction enforced in, in perpetuity? Putting aside public access.
Um, so that would be the same type, it would be an open space restriction, and all of those those restrictions and requirements are listed in that open space restriction, and so we're saying that, you know, the select board would have the ability, it's also part of the special permit, they would have the ability to enforce under that restriction, the building commissioner can also enforce it as part of the special permit. The example is, um, the open space next to the church on Church Street, that is a, that has an open space restriction on it, that is held by the select board.
Okay.
That's covered under ten two nine three. Right.
Did you get your question answered?
No, sorry, but I'm just trying to direct Burton to ten two nine three. So I think both
Yeah.
The conservation land and the public are covered there, whereas in ten two nine two, it's just public access.
Yeah, I ju, that's a distinction I wanna make sure we make, that we don't, that we don't confuse things by suggesting that we, we believe there should be public access along the corridor, or in the back, in the back, um, sloping, uh, green space.
The corridor, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we keep ten two nine two as is, and then we keep ten two nine three as is, and then in the modification, when we say ten to, ten to fifteen foot corridor, we make clear that this should be covered within the restriction that works to the conservation.
Okay, so that's somewhere like down on page seventeen.
Yeah.
We're getting there.
Okay.
Alright, page thirteen. I have a comment on four, uh, ten four two two. Um, it's, uh, basically where we, uh, say that about the, the project, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "The project incorporates a mix of one and two car garages, which the planning board finds as sufficient parking for residential development." Um, I thought that maybe we should say more than sufficient, because we're actually trying to get them to reduce the number of garage bays, right? Okay? So instead of just sufficient, let's say more than sufficient.
Too sufficient.
Too sufficient. Excessive, no, uh, well.
Well
I mean, it's basically
I, I mean, I think what we're saying is excessive.
This is just saying that there's adequate parking, no, but they're just saying, is there capacity for parking, and I think more than sufficient is speaking to this point. Like, we do also say, we wanna reduce garage base elsewhere.
Only that same sentence in four two, ten four two three, planning board is in general support of the proposed PRD, like, I think the revision that we had at the beginning would just replace this sentence.
Well
It believes that with some recommendations
Uh, hold it, no, but this is, we do need to refer to this.
Because we're talking about that.
We're talking about the proposed PRD, this is, this is the proposed PRD that we have to
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay? And so with the rec
Well, I, but we're not in general support of the proposed
You could, you could still reward it similar to what we had before, you say the planning board is in general support of a PRD and believes that with some recommendation, uh, recommended modifications, this proposed PRD, uh, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Work that in that way, so you're making it clear you
Well, and believes this, that, this proposed PRD with some recommended modifications.
The PRD.
Okay.
And I do
I mean, it might just be faster to just say, "The planning board believes that with some recommended modifications, this proposed," you don't have to
Okay.
Right, cause in this case, we're not really talking about the suitability of the site for a PRD in general, okay?
Okay, uh, and also under ten, uh, ten four two one, um I'm not sure where these
Oh.
So this, a hundred feet should read fourteen feet, and this eighty feet should read thirty-four feet.
Okay.
Thirty-four. So we'll say approximately
Okay, you hit something on top of thirteen?
Approximately thirty-four.
Oh, about getting the numbers straight, yeah.
Um, just under ten four two four C.
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
What now, where are we on to?
Ten, uh, well, actually, I had one for ten four two four A, which was incomplete.
Yes.
It's, this says the.
Good catch. Three, I would like you to know that three people missed that. Think the board would like to give me a sentence, too.
Well Well, it, it does to the, that the, the one point one six three acre public park does, um, you know, preserve open space between what now will be developed neighborhoods. I think we can just note that, but.
We talked about also that people might walk through the park for, to get to the train.
Yeah, that would be good under ten four two four B. I think that that would fit best there.
A, we can also reference the isolated wetland conservation area.
In A, yeah, I think that's true.
So.
So.
For A, um, the one point one six four acre park.
And the.
Preserve open space between developed neighborhoods, and what did you want A?
And how about the proposed common open space?
It, at the, yeah, the north end of the property, you know, maintains a, an, a buffer between the neighborhood and, well, the railroad and the park.
A common, a connection between existing.
Provides a connection between the town land and the adjacent opens, provides, okay.
Was that over A or B?
That's A.
That was A. And then B, we were going to add a sentence about the West Concord neighborhood area, and could provide, uh, you know, a pedestrian path for neighbors going to town or something like this.
To the point of, point A, um, do we need to have any language in there saying pending the inclusion of the corridor?
Provided that the corridors, yeah, it's complete, provided the modification, the corridor modification is completed, sure.
Modification, okay.
Um, I leave this to Matt on the grammar side, but, and B is, should it be that the planning board believes rather than which?
That, which always has a comma in front of it.
But only.
That is the simple rule, so.
Only if you were directly referring to.
Right, and so it's a, dependent versus independent clause, so.
Where are you?
That, uh, I think that is what we meant here.
Where are you now? Instead of which?
Instead of which.
Unless you want to reorganize the sentence.
No. That was, uh, ten four two four B.
Which is getting changed to a that.
That's right.
But to finish up B.
Okay.
And could provide a pedestrian path to of West Concord Village.
Right, for neighborhood, for neighbors, right, yes, for the neighborhood. For the nearby, nearby neighbors or something. That's a second sentence. If you want. Okay.
And, and C, um, I was just going to suggest in that last sentence, again, since this is all contingent on, with the modifications, like, the planning board believes that only with recommended modifications would, you know, this meet the long range land use plan. I just like to want to strengthen that a bit.
Okay. I'm all right with that, everybody.
I mean, the project conforms is a bit too definitive.
Alan, you're going to have to really speak up.
Yeah, in that sentence, the project conforms, I don't know if, it, it gets closer to conforming to the town long range land use plan, but I don't know if.
Let's see, talks about, well, the, the criterion is conforms, recognition, project.
And basically, it gets closer to the long range plan, but not, it's not as definitive, I think.
Well, the comprehensive long range plan does not provide specifics on how the project gets laid out or, um, building type, or it, it, the long range plan did specifically select this site as an area for a more dense PRD.
Yeah, but, I mean, if you think about the land conservation and sustainability, certainly, I could imagine a project that went further on both of those fronts. So.
How about instead of saying the project conforms, you say the project reflects elements of the town's long range?
Or meets the basic earths.
Because, to Elizabeth's point, the long range plan, the, the long range plan is, is, uh, general in nature.
Right.
It is general, but it is also aspirational, and.
This is the comprehensive long range plan?
Yes.
Emphasizes sustainability and everything.
Yeah. So I, I do think you're right.
I mean, if we say it conforms, I mean.
That's fine, so reflects elements of the town's long range plan.
Yeah, okay.
Only with the recommended.
Okay, so, uh, moving to fourteen. I have some comments on ten four two six, I assume other people might, too.
I, I do.
Okay.
Sir Elizabeth, thank you, you, I see you put in the deletion on the plans of any provision for fossil fuel tie-ins.
That was a very difficult conversation to follow, so.
Yeah.
All I ended up doing was writing one sentences and so.
It certainly gets us the opportunity to discuss further.
Yeah, so, so if you've got two questions, um, I presume that deletion on all plans for fossil fuel tie-ins or utilities means that those cannot then be built. Is that accurate?
That would be our recommendation.
I got that part, but.
So I under, I, um, you can, that, that would mean, these are the approved plans, and this is what is approved for the utilities, um, understanding, I think your point, five years down the road, ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road. I'm not going to be here.
Yeah. Well, and, and I, I think it's unlikely, once you put in the infrastructure for alternative.
Well, people are extending gas mains all the time, so, um, an option would be to have that reflected as a condition of approval, which I, I thought it was, but I thought it was also restated in the conditions, that it can be incorporated into the condo docs.
I was just curious about your choice of words.
Can we look at that? I agree with that. Look at the language in the condo docs, can you direct us to that? At the same time that we're reviewing this.
Yeah, so it's currently, it would be condition twenty four, so currently, it's not in there, so you could add that, that, whatever language you decide.
Oh, it's not anyway.
No, can be added as item J.
Okay. I think that that would be great. My, but my, my other second point, just more general, is the other elements here that we've called out as our recommend, recommendations are tied to specific section, the specific discussion higher up on the PRD, going, as we go through the regulation. I brought up the, um, the fossil fuel piece in connection with, in, in response to language, it's in the preamble to the PRD bylaw, and also the special permit requirements language. That, those two things are reflected in your report, but they, they, they don't appear to be part of the letter of recommendation. My concern is just that this point, this second point, deletion on any plan, there's no other discussion of it. So if I'm on the zoning board, I might be thinking, why are they calling this out, and what, how does this, how is this a, a, a requirement, what, under what statutory authority do we have to place the, the requirement on the development? I think there is authority in that preamble and in the, the reference to town ecology, and more specifically in the, in the special permit section regarding, uh, talking about the, uh, the environment as it's worded in that, in, in, in the considerations to be made when granting a special permit.
Well, you can also include it in just your last discussion under the long range plan.
Okay, I, I, anywhere, I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be, uh, care too much. I just want to make sure that when this goes, there, there's supporting language that, that ties in some discussion as to the, well, what at least I believe is, is the authority under that spec, the, the decision-making room we have under the special permit granting language. And I can, I can refer to that specifically, but you, you know, because you, you've had, you've got it in, um, you know, under, it says, "Under a special permit, we, we need to consider each of the following impacts on the natural environment and fiscal impacts, uh, sorry, yeah, just impacts on the natural environment." So, I'm not sure how we tie that in.
I mean, I'm generally not a huge fan of footnotes, because people will blow right past them, but what, both points one and two would, you could use the same references for.
I agree.
Yeah, or up above, as Elizabeth said, in, in the long range land use plan, it's going to just say.
I would just include a statement under the long range plan section.
Okay.
Yeah, like the Concord, because the town of Concord pride itself of being a front runner in advancing environmental sustainability policies, blah, 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 whatever is like verbatim from the long range plan.
Yeah, but I, I, I think it's very important that we, that we really make a focal point of that within the recommendation portion itself.
Yeah.
Because it does tie all of that together, and it's, as Burton's point, is really the basis for, for those.
So under ten four two four C, conforms to the town's long range plan.
Okay.
Or in.
Conforms, well, so it is, this is separate and above, the, the long range plan, of course, talks about, um, uh, reducing fossil fuel use, and, and, and it goes into much greater depth. I think what we should, should be pointing to is the special permit granting language that says we need to take into account the impacts on the natural environment.
Yes.
Eleven six five.
Okay, so, um, we can, we can go through and add all of the special permit criteria and the statement under each of those to your recommendation, as far as your analysis. I mean, it's not, it's not required, but.
Does anybody else have a view on how we should address this?
So you're talking like ten four two six in general, like restructure, not just as it relates to the.
No, he's talking about, so, part of the Board of Appeals special permit, they will need to make the required find, the required findings under special, under the special permit.
And we don't supply a separate document for special permit, a sep, separate report?
No, this is our letter.
This is the recommendation letter, right?
Yeah.
And then, um.
And then they go about, yeah, finding.
So, so why, um, is it because everything that we need to address the special permit, we consider already in here? Is that why we don't specifically call out eleven point six as we do here for each item?
Well, it's just that the, the bylaw, the section ten, you know, tells what our report has to say, and it doesn't really go to these points, yeah. But it is true that the, the ZPA is going to have to come to some decisions on these things, and so to the extent we can give them some input, that's helpful.
Right, I think giving them the guidance of where they can reference to for a reason for having these in here gives them more authority to, you know, stand on those points, as opposed to the long range plan, which.
Right. But how do we do that?
We, we touch on.
How do we do that efficiently?
Yeah, exactly, because we touched.
In accordance with eleven point.
Without redundancy, because we, we've touched upon these things throughout the letter.
Well.
Many of them, if not all of them.
Redundancy is not necessarily awful in this case.
What we haven't, the only one I care about, i- in terms of the special permit elements, is impact on, on, on the, uh, natural environment. And the reason that's the only one I care about is because I think the other ones, yeah, are, are otherwise generally talked about in our PRD criteria. That one is, ties into some language in the preamble and the purpose statement, but, um, that purpose, we don't revisit and discuss. So, e- even if we expanded this sentence, "The deletion of, on all plans of any provision of fossil fuel tie-ins or utilities in order to, for the, for the project to, to meet the requirement of a special permit that it, you know."
To meet the special permit requirement that, right.
That, in, in consideration of the project's impacts on the natural environment. Some, some, some discussion referencing that specific statutory authority.
Agreed.
So maybe that's the simplest thing to do. So, Sir Elizabeth, in, um, let's see if I'm going to, maybe you turn on red lights.
So you could do that, you're, you're typing it up.
Something like this, uh, eleven point, let's see, six five, okay. So, "The deletion on all plans of any provision for fossil fuel tie-ins or utilities in order to reduce the project's impact on the natural environment in consideration of section eleven point six five in the special permit." Something, that's the gist?
So I, um, I think, you know, that's fine, it's your, you know, recommendation letter. I think to Nathan's point, tying this back into the, the body of, of, of your analysis before you get to the recommendation, so including some type of sentence under the long range plan, where, you know, one of the main, main elements and big ideas in the long range plan deals with sustainability and, you know, impacts on the natural environment.
Wait, my, my point was to actually have it in ten point four two six. Because, because I think tying it to the long range plan isn't, it, having a statute that we can point to is much stronger, I think, than, and, and putting it at that point, so it's like a very strong focus.
Well, but hold it, how about even just back on, uh, ten one, under purpose, where we say, you know, "With these modifications and conditions of approval, that the, this thing will preserve open spacing," so on. Don't you want to just add the criterion there? That, that basically our modifications are going towards.
So the, the, nothing in the purpose talks about sustainability.
Okay, but I thought you had this sentence that you were talking about, the environmental.
That's from the statute.
In the statute, the perfect, the purpose, it means, it mentions ecological impact, but.
Ecological.
I like, Elizabeth, where you're going with this. I think that what we can say is, in the, in the discussion of the long range plan, the long range plan, um, uh, which, which section is that? Here, it's ten four.
Ten four two four.
Ten four two.
Four C, is that right?
Four C, so, when, I think maybe it's a sentence that, you know, it says, "Long range plan contains, you know, goals of, of, however we want to state this, you know, but decarbonization or moving to renewable, renewable energy sources, and, and the special permit granting authority requires consideration of a project's impact on the natural environment." energy sources, and, and the special permit granting authority requires consideration of a project's impact on the natural environment. We tie that to the specific statute as illuminated by the, as, the way to interpret that is illuminated by the long range plan?
Do we need to demonstrate anywhere that mandating electrical only? Muzzest towards that?
There's no, there's no mandate in the long range plan, you know.
Right.
So it's work.
Why the reference to the statute is important?
And it's nowhere in the report, it seems like we need to bridge.
But the lo- the long range plan has specific goals and action items regarding sustainability, reducing carbon footprint.
With, and, and so does it say reducing the amount of homes using natural gas appliances?
I, I don't know if it has a specific action item for that off the top of my head, I know there's specific action items dealing with reducing.
Delete it to that one.
I'm just, my concern is that the long range plan, as aspirational as it is, a clever attorney would be able to, you know, push that aside, whereas the statute, we can point to.
But I think we're doing both, is what we're saying.
Right, but by having the statutory reference in the recommendation portion as well, we can have it in multiple places. It drives home to, first off, you know, the goal of this board, and, you know, guides the ZBA on what we're trying to do and under what authority they can make, you know, push on those items. So if that matters to us and we want to see that, you know, no fossil fuel hookups are put into this development, that's the language that we need to reference that gives the footing to do so.
I, I think Burton.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Do you, can you maybe restate?
So I'm, I'm coming up with, you know, the comprehensive long range plan incorporates specific goals and action items regarding sustainability, reduction in, and I'll, and I'll pull the exact words out of the plan, I think it's reduction of greenhouse gas emissions.
Yep.
And.
No carbon emitting, yeah, yeah, just pull.
So whatever the language is, is in the plan. And the special permit granting authority under the special permit criteria.
Eleven six five?
Eleven six, uh, five. Especially impacts on the natural environment.
Wait, wait.
Planning, the planning board recommends the, um, that there be no fossil fuel tie-ins or utilities.
I think that's the gist of it, yeah, great.
Might switch that around, just so it sounds like English, but.
Yep.
I know this is really silly, but when I read no fossil fuel tie-ins or utilities, I was like, didn't understand that you were saying no fossil fuel utilities. So I, do you know what I'm saying?
So again, this was a very difficult conversation, so if somebody wants to give me better words.
So is, why is, why did you choose to write the deletion on all plans for, versus some, versus saying the development shall be constructed using only.
Oh, that, yeah, no, that's.
Oh, is there, yeah, were you avoiding, okay.
No, you can, you, the, you can say the project shall not.
I'd rather say of what the effect of deleting it on the plans is versus saying, like calling out the actual deletion. I don't, Burton, do you, do you care?
You're basically just saying it has to be all electric.
I think we just reworded that, yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we were rewording it.
So you can, you can, so it says, you're, you're making modifications. Smaller units, incorporation of more one car garages, including more duplexes. You can, you can phrase it in a positive, um, use of only, use of only electric.
Utilities?
Utilities.
I, I would still say with no fossil fuel tie-ins.
That's a bit confusing, cause I tell, you know, the MLP becomes.
Well, of, uh, yeah, you could.
Renewable, I mean, it's.
You could have a, a buried propane tank.
Yeah, I think.
And that's not a fossil fuel tie-in.
Hmm.
Right. So now, so we're gonna phrase it in the positive, the, the use of only electric utilities?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
It's unambiguous.
And I will, I will carry that statement over to the previous sentence we were talking about under the long range plan.
Great.
Just a clarifying question on A, B, and C of, um, are we leaving it open to like interpretation for like how to reduce or like the extent of duplexes or triplexes versus like recommending like XYZ number? Is that the idea?
Correct.
Yeah. Like i- if they go from one, like one, two car garage unit down, then reduce that to like one car garage, technically that's more one car garages, if left open to interpretation, I guess.
So you're gonna leave it open to interpretation for the special permit granting authority?
Okay.
I recommend for number one, just adding for, to increase diversity and to reduce overall the amount of previous, they just add. It says it above, but.
Oh, so in sentence one, near this, it says the overall, so the overall reduction.
I'm sorry, what, what, what change?
So in number one, it's just, that's a really meaty one, and it's, it's bucketing it all, all under the need to reduce impervious coverage, where we really have a lot more that we're trying to accomplish.
Just add the words and increase diversity.
Yeah, and even, rather than impervious coverage, I would say like the developed area of the site, maybe. That's, I just, just add, that's the most important thing to add diversity.
Yeah, I, I would say unit diversity, increase.
Increase unit diversity, okay?
And then in three, thank you for doing this, like reducing my six paragraphs down to one intelligence of this. Can we add here, the, the corridor shall be subject to the same, the restriction covering common open space too?
So, yeah, it would attend to fifteen foot natural green space corridor connection.
I think it's perfect way to just add another sentence, I mean, I'm sorry, but whatever you wanna do.
Oh, I was just gonna say, as, as part of the.
Perfect, yes, do that.
As part of the open space?
Perfect.
And, I mean, since we're on it, say a ten foot to fifteen foot natural green space, I feel like, let, pu- put a figure. If we say ten, they're definitely gonna go ten, if we want fifteen, say fifteen.
Yeah, that's a good point, the, the original idea was to make it subject to the recommendation of the.
NRC, yeah.
Yeah.
And so maybe we can, can we, is that useful at this point to say as, no, sorry, I don't.
Fifteen foot plus.
But I mean, it really does need to be based upon, I think, the NRC director's recommendation, we don't have the expertise to be signing that.
It was my thought that providing that flexibility lets them move things around as far as the building and the exclusive use areas, and it might be fifteen at one point and ten at another, and.
They might need it, they might need that like five feet somewhere to make it feasible, so.
I mean, this, that is a concept that the Natural Resource Commission is also looking at, so.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna do, make it ten all the way, I think they're gonna do some five foot.
You, you, you can state, you know, as, as required or recommended by NRC. But I, I would, I don't wish to confuse your recommendation with theirs.
That, well, that was gonna be my question, is there, has there been anything from the NRC?
There will be.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, yeah, okay.
I've just been looking through what the long range plan says about carbon or sustainable housing, residential. Best thing I've found so far is page seventy-one. In particular, adding a range of housing choices, including sustainable, passive, or net zero, young family slash workforce house, workforce housing can set a model for all housing development in the town and put conquer to the forefront of innovation in this area.
And I would be happy to incorporate that entire sentence into ten four two four C.
Okay.
I did pull out other language, though, I think it's right up top about more just generic like goals of eighty, you know, eighty percent reduction by twenty fifty on greenhouse gas, not specific to housing, but.
I, I would point out that any, any applicant, if we're not pointing to something that is statute, if they don't wanna do it, they're just gonna say no.
It's not only true.
That's, that's great.
Yeah, but it's, most of, most of what's here is saying encourage, provide incentives, the commitments are on the municipal side.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're not on the residential side, I mean, if you look at, I mean, everything I've read so far.
This is not.
I mean, it's amazing how fast the.
So we don't need to get into a philosophical.
I'm just saying, things have moved along pretty fast, I even sensed this was written.
They would say no, and they would fight that, so that's why it's very important that anything that we're gonna point to be statute, because that is the ground that we stand on.
The, the statute requires us to, to take into account the long range plan.
Yeah.
I wanted to have two tie-ins, so that is why I liked Elizabeth's suggestion, it, we're talking about meeting our obligation to consider the long range plan, which is a specific requirement of the PRD, and also, as I think you're getting at, the, the permit, special permit granting language. But the, the long range plan is, is just, it's one step further removed, but it's still a requirement of the statute that we take in, that we take.
As, as a reference.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a goal of the plan, not.
So right below that is number four, and what was, sent to the board, it was on the second, I did not, is when I finally received a comment letter from engineering. So they had their standard conditions which have been incorporated in here, and this was, this was, this is something new.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't recall anything about this, that was my comment, this seems new.
This is the first time, this is the first time that the engineering division has actually even looked at a landscape plan, I believe. So this doesn't have to be incorporated into this part, it can be tweaked to just be, actually just be a condition that.
It seems like a condition or a modification.
And so the, the wording of this would change to reflect this, the similar standard development of a condition, it would be, you know, prior to the issuance of a building permit.
There we go.
shall amend the landscape plan to show that public shade trees, blah, blah, blah.
I, I think that's better, because especially given that we had not discussed it before, it'd be rough to put it here.
That works.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready to go down to the conditions? My, I, I was thinking, number one seemed out of place, out of sequence, you know, you've got this, I don't know, I, I thought that it seemed like your conditions were roughly in chronological type of sequence, you know, prior to the commitment, commencement of any site work, and then I think you would have something that would say during construction, at all times during construction.
Um, but this is, this is at all times, it's so when they, you know, prior to their, you know, they do this, you know, the grubbing and the clearing, they're gonna have people out there installing fencing, and so that's why we place conditions that's.
Okay, so this is just normal?
That, yeah, conditions that are throughout the whole entire thing, and it's just at all times, we usually put those first.
Okay, alright. Any, I, I, now I don't have any other comments until I get to page eighteen, I don't know if anybody else said something.
Or, or questions, um.
Um, I, did, did I see something, and I'm sorry if it's here, about the planning board weighing in on the street name?
That's, that's way back on, like, page three.
Did we do that?
That was, that was something that the planning board never even talked about.
Oh, I thought we, I thought it was brought up at one of the meetings. And how about the park, can we, were you in the meeting of the park, it's already named?
Well, no, well, no, the planning board has the, um, the responsibility for street names, and that comes from under like subdivision control, and that's where.
Okay, can we still do that, or it's too late? Was it named now?
There, there is no name to the roadway, but generally the, there is always input from the historical commission and the fire chief on road names, I think if the planning board has, you know, a few recommended names to be further discussed with the historical commission and the fire chief, that that's not, that wouldn't be a problem, I believe the applicant has already proposed, you know, it's Daniel Hayes Park.
Way, oh, for the street?
For the park.
Sorry, okay, it sounds like this is something that is not, that's not really good to do right now. And maybe could've done, been done before, like in the previous eighteen?
Does anybody have any suggestions?
I, I'm curious now, did you have?
No, well, it's something that we wanna advocate for, like long range plan way, or energy efficiency drive, or, or. I don't, I don't know.
So, so typically, typically road names, there's usually a, a review of the history of the site.
Well, that's, okay.
And.
And sometimes it's like what used to be here, which is sad.
And what used to be there, or.
Way, whatever, so, okay, so let me keep going, cause it's, but.
So similar to the, the PRD four thirty old Bedford, the history of the site, and, um, so that's, that's generally how they have been named, and then input from the fire department as far as emergency response, that it not be confusing, similar to something else.
Okay.
I, I can tell you there will never be another road in this town that uses the word black, since we now have black duck, black horse, and black birch. But so, let's move on.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, Matt, what was your comment?
If no one else had any comments prior to page eighteen, it was just in, in B, there's just a typo that there needs to be a space in, and A requirement.
And, and in section D, there, there's a word missing.
And I have, so on page eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay. So before you get to eighteen, um, on condition twenty-two, so it, it should read, um, may not exceed eighty-seven bedrooms, there's.
You mean twenty-three?
Tw- on condition twenty-three, and that's, that's eighty-seven bedrooms connected to the onsite sewer dispos- sewage disposal system. Because the master D will also include those units that will be tying into town sewer.
Right, and then what about D then on?
Yep, and the same thing for, the same thing for D.
That language, that's missing the same word, it says the applicant shall submit, specifying the maximum number of bedrooms allowed in each unit collectively may not exceed any, and then say that collect, that collectively make up the. And then say that collect, that collectively make up the, the development or the maximum number of bedrooms allowed in all units collectively?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, and then that are connected to the sewer, right, 'cause that's just the ones connected to the, or, I mean, sorry, to sewage system. Septic system, septic system.
Yeah.
Connected, and then the same, same on D.
Yeah, and then here it would, I think, I, I take your suggestion of a statement limiting fossil fuel, fossil fuel utilities.
So we, we phrased it in a positive, that the project shall utilize all electric utilities.
That's fine.
And, and you can put paren, though.
Well, I'm just thinking about what the wording is gonna need to be in the condominium doc, and there it's gonna need to be a prohibition, right? But I, I think it should be.
Should be a prohibition.
A prohibition on fossil fuel utilities, I don't wanna say on all fossil fuels, 'cause it'll take away people's barbecue grills, and then they'll really get angry, but fossil fuel utilities.
Okay.
Is, are there electric, non-fossil fuel, non-electric utilities that are, are an alternative renewable thing that is used? So that's why, I guess, that's why I think it's better to just do a prohibition of fossil fuel rather than prescribing all, all electric, but I don't know.
Um, well, the utilities, I think, would be.
So like geothermal, you know?
Yeah.
I, I do think we're going to electrification, so I do think we will, it is worth calling that out in the positive.
Okay, I, I know what.
I can, I can include both.
I think it's, I think both is.
Okay.
I just don't wanna mistakenly.
Right.
Eliminating options for things that are not electric, but that, I don't.
I, I mean, I, I think to, I think to provide with clean energy.
Development shall utilize all electric utilities and prohibit fossil fuel utilities.
I, I'm in favor of that.
Yes, this is a new one, this is a new one that's being put in.
So this is J, under.
It's a new condition.
Twenty-four J.
You could have a central wood-fired heat, heat plant.
Well, there'd be a greenhouse.
We got, it's already been a long night, I retract that.
Hold on, hold on a second, if somebody has.
Geothermal.
Well, geothermal should be electric.
Geothermal's electric.
But is a, so are we promoting wood?
Well, okay, I guess it depends, I mean.
I, I don't, I don't.
No, no.
What do you call those?
Wood stuffs.
Wood stuffs, I don't think most people would consider that a utility.
Right.
Even though it could be used as.
Powered by electricity.
Okay, too many conversations happening at once.
And we're not intending to prohibit that, 'cause it's not a fossil fuel, it's carbon neutral.
We're talking about wood?
Yes.
It is?
Well, within a, within a fifty-year lifespan, as opposed to a million-year lifespan.
Page nineteen.
I have no further comments. On, on, on the remaining pages, yeah, I'm done.
For the rest of the night?
No, no, just for.
Mic drop.
The rest of these conditions, I'm okay with. And if others.
This is a hard one to do over the holiday, Elizabeth worked a lot of the weekend to do it, thank you Elizabeth for this.
Yes.
So I guess the, now we have that question of, did we get things that were concrete enough, and do we feel confident enough about them that we could designate a member of the board to work with Elizabeth to review and confirm that our comments have been incorporated, and then to submit the report? Or do we need to come back in the next meeting and review the final report to see whether there are any issues?
Review the final report.
Well, the, the, I think that, what I would say is that while we can technically submit it later, the influence of the report will be reduced the later it goes in. And so I would actually, I felt that we actually, I, I don't feel like there was a lot of ambiguity left in the, the comments that we made tonight, and that Kristen was taking good notes, and that we could.
As clerk.
Have the clerk.
Before Thursday? I'm not clerk anymore.
Oh.
Oh, in that case.
We're talking about, when are you, when are you making these changes?
That's one thing we were talking about.
The changes will be made tomorrow morning.
All right, so it needs to be, but we're, we're proposing reviewing it and then giving.
No, one, one member.
I mean, one, one.
One member of the board.
But, but I mean, so that the ZBA can have it on Thursday.
Correct.
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
I, I am in favor of that too, rather than us reviewing it all together in a future meeting.
I, I think it, I think it makes sense.
If it is Burton doing it, I'm okay with it, 'cause it's, it's on the point that we were talking about, that we're aligned.
Or, do you have time to do that?
Sure.
That would be great.
Okay, so I think then we're ready to have a vote, and a motion that would need to designate Burton, right?
And, and typically, you authorize the, same as endorsement, but authorize the town planner to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay. Anybody?
The, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what the vote here is, so I make a motion that we, we direct the town planner to prepare a a revised, a, a recommendation letter as revised.
Nope, so you don't, yeah, you don't, you're, you're, you can vote on your recommendation, which be, would be to the Board of Appeals for to grant the special permit with modifications. Subject to conditions of approval.
It's written in the letter, would, as revised this evening, and appoint.
Yeah.
Authorized.
And authorize.
I just went to review the revised letter, and the town planner to sign on behalf of the board.
Play that back.
Okay.
Okay, I make.
That's the motion.
I make a motion that we recommend, there we go, you've got the form. All right, recommend to the Board of Appeals the approval of a special permit to develop thirty-four unit planned residential development pursuant to zoning bylaw, section seven point five, earth removal, section ten, PRD, section eleven point six, special permit, and section eleven point seven variants at fourteen forty through fourteen fifty Main Street, as, as described in our letter of recommendation with modifications and conditions specified in the letter, to, to, with the changes discussed tonight to be, to be reviewed by myself, and, 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 and that we provide, we authorize the town planner to execute the letter on the planning board's behalf.
That's the longest one, motion we've had in a long time, anyone want to second that? Okay, Alan seconds it. All right, so all those in favor of this motion? All those opposed? Okay. Okay, I think we're done with that item, so let's move on to our next item on the agenda, which was draft twenty twenty annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment discussion. So we got a few revisions to talk about. Do we wanna take a three-minute break? Love to get a sip of water, just.
Do you wanna take, are you taking a break?
Yeah, just a three-minute break, just so we.
Do all of these need to be, like, done?
Huh?
Do all of these need to be done?
Do they, um, well, yes, this is our last, the warrant closes on the tenth, so unless we meet on the tenth for breakfast, we don't have time to notice a meeting and have it.
On the tenth?
Well, I mean, between now and then, I, but, I don't think we want to.
I don't, I don't think you're having this conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So I'll just email it to you in the morning?
That's great.
I'll have it done.
I have, I, I don't have a very busy day tomorrow, I have, I have one meeting tomorrow, first thing in the morning. Okay, so this additional.
Nathan, this one was very drafty. Oh, no, it's the windows, so. Go ahead.
Is the only thing we're talking about with respect to the bylaw amendment, is the, this PRD thing that you sent around yesterday?
Well, you're, you're, you have to go through each.
Are we assigning it today?
Eight of these, and have to move second and.
Assign, we can do that now.
You don't have to do that now, but you have to, you know, move to place it on the law. So, start my car?
Yeah.
And, let's, you'll put it in reverse, the little camera comes on, I back up, and I put it in drive, and it takes like thirty seconds or so for the camera to turn off?
Turn off? My Curtis app too.
Freaks me out.
It's, it's not immediate on mine, but it's not, I wouldn't say it's thirty seconds. It's, it always does kinda feel like maybe it's a little longer than it needs to be.
Okay, so it's not just my car?
It's also like, if you do something like.
You're going back and forth.
Well, yeah, like if, if I'm going into like, fiddle with the, well, you can't do the radio while the, while the camera's on. Vice versa, if you get the cap, the radio, you're fiddling with the radio, then the camera won't be in. It's just kind of a, kind of a laggy system, at least in my car.
It's kinda freaked me out a little bit. I put my car in reverse and the camera comes on, and then I put it in drive, and I can, I can drive like halfway down the block before the camera goes away.
Yeah.
So I'm looking, you know, behind me.
But you're looking out the windshield.
You don't have the remote start, right?
On the phone.
But do you use it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, 'cause I was thinking that if you're just getting in and starting it, it's even, like, takes even longer for that system to sort of boot up, maybe that wasn't.
All right, here we go again.
Ooh, missing a couple of numbers.
What were you saying earlier about it only being eight o'clock? Hopefully, mostly easier.
Yeah. Here we go. Yeah, well. I mean, we could, we, we've got a court, we can get started on the discussion. So, let's begin, we can resume recording, and let's start discussing these bylaw amendments. So we have a few that came back with revisions. I think that, why don't we just tackle the biggest one first, the PRD?
So one, as far as what the board needs to do tonight is actually, you know, go through each of the eight.
Oh, and we need to vote.
And then move second and vote to move forward and place that on the warrant, or submit it as a warrant article. So if you wanna start with, the biggest one I think is the PRD.
Yeah, I think that while we're freshest, though everything's relative, we should probably go after the PRD. Okay? So I think that, you know, we discussed last time, most of these proposed changes. I think the biggest thing is the ten two three six, section ten two three six. Did, is there, before we get into that, was there any comments on any of the other aspects of the revised bylaw? I don't think that much else has been changed.
I just had one question, and I did this last time, but just up above, I can't necessarily think of an example that this would matter, but I see we use, with the term green building practices up at the, the very top. Is there? That versus like, just, I think we had sustainability maybe before, or use that word in particular, just was curious if a decision was made for one or the other, and if there would be any reason to go with one.
Well, green building practice is more specific, I think, and then isn't there a definition proposed? We, we found a definition, but did we, did it get put into here? 'Cause I know that we have other definitions that are in here, the sustainable design requirement, which is section two, ten two eleven.
As I remember, was including incorporate low-impact development, but.
Was clear, was clearly defined, but not green building.
Clarified, but not necessarily green building practices, because that's not an actual defined term, and.
What about energy efficient building design, which you do have identified here?
So instead of green building practices.
Building design, energy efficient building design.
Energy efficient design.
Um, but green building also encompasses like materials, selection, stuff like that.
It does, but do you, um, um.
Do you care about that?
No, I mean, we do, but I'm just trying to think about what, what the overall goals are, and how much we're gonna be able to see and, and weigh, like, is this board going to be able to evaluate the, the material, building materials themselves, or is it just gonna be the submission of them, is good enough, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, like, the green, green roofs is, I guess, one thing that would come to my mind that would be included, obviously, in like energy efficient. I mean, if you really stretch the interpretation maybe, but.
But, I mean, are we seeing green roofs for residential development?
We might like to. If you're in like a place that's solar, or you're heavily, heavily forested, or whatever, and you can't do solar.
So do we just stick with green building design then, in the general term? Even though we don't provide clarity by what we mean, people would have to infer based upon the many definitions that are out there, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's in other towns' bylaws.
Yeah, so.
I think I was wrong about saying that we should keep low-impact development capitalized. I think you're right, I think it should go lower gears, 'cause that don't open up generally.
But I thought we have it as a defined term in our bylaw now. We have low-impact development for stormwater design. Yeah.
Although that could disappear next week.
Yeah, that's why we kept that capitalized.
Yeah, and we have a, and we do describe what the measures are and everything, yeah. So can we go now to ten two three six? The density bonuses, I think that that's really the main thing that's left, right, that wasn't determined last time.
And the explanation.
Okay.
The, I, one, one question, do we, do we intend it to be a mixture of the following, or one of the following? I mean, just considering, and, and the reason I ask that is because we've got.
It's one or more of the following.
It says, based upon a mixture of the following.
A mixture would be more than one, and one or more would be one.
Well, in the past, we have offered density bonuses if someone just does affordability, right? And I assume we're not gonna take that away.
Yeah, I'd be, well, yeah, I guess I wouldn't use mixture, I view it as they're individual carrots.
Right, so one or more of the following, yeah.
Okay.
That, that means, just so we're clear, somebody could come and say, oh, we've got all electric appliances, we get a bonus density, which is a really cheap way.
Well, I would recommend striking D myself. I think that the town is gonna come up with an approach, I, I would actually like to replace D with, you know, a percentage beyond the stretch code requirement for efficiency, as opposed to.
I would just, I would, I would keep something that does not yet exist, because then it is there for this.
But are we gonna give extra units for it?
Yeah.
When it's actually, it's probably even cheaper to do it than to use conventional system, you know?
We just had, we just had one here that didn't want to.
Well, that's, that's, but there are, there are people that think the other way, you know?
Based on your discussion just five minutes ago, um, I think you can easily delete D.
I think we can.
Because you have in here, you've retained the, um, long range plan.
We've already insisted upon it, even without this.
Right, right.
I, I think deleting D.
It's safe. We're not going to provide bonus density for this. We're going to insist upon it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So where is that being assisted upon specifically in here elsewhere?
It's not specifically in here, but.
Well, based on your previous conversation, yes, it's specifically, you can tie it to a very strong statement of a long range plan.
We found a way to do it.
Right, but.
I mean, it is a little different now that if we're going to be the special permit granting authority.
And you are the special permit granting authority under this, so you will have to make your required findings under eleven six as well.
Yeah. Are we okay? I think that it just does, it, I don't want to give bonuses for D.
I mean, one thing I thought about is I, I agree with striking it. Since we would like to just make it a blanket requirement, then does it make sense to do, is all electric considered net zero or is that like two above?
I wouldn't think so.
No, but what we would do is we would offer incentives for net zero or something close to it, you know? And that's what I was saying, maybe we, we can't, I think it's always tricky to give a exact hers rating. I think we talked about the down, the pitfalls of that, but what if we said, you know, a percentage beyond or something like that, right? Or we would just say that, you know, for efficiency beyond the stretch code or, you know, or net zero.
Net zero.
Or efficiency beyond.
Net zero means specifically that it generates as much electricity as it uses.
Right, which you.
And we, we have a, we have, I don't think that should be our focus.
No, I don't think it has to be the case. I mean, it's wonderful if it is, but, yeah, so, uh, that's why I would say that either net zero capable or.
You could also use passive house standards. You could say built to passive house standards. Cause there, there are such things and that is very low usage.
This is starting to feel pretty wide open. One other thing, consideration for the warrant is.
I'm also, um, very hesitant to, you are now trying to fix so many different things that address so many different elements that are somewhat beyond a PRD. I mean, the, the purpose of the PRD.
This is, we're just talking about bonus here. I mean, we're not.
What are we giving bonuses for?
But both, the PRD isn't to develop sustainable homes or net zero homes. The PRD is for the preservation of open space and diversity of housing.
Yeah.
And mean.
I'm, I'm with you, Matt, that I think we, we delete that section, the things that we would want to award a bonus density for, those other things go to diversity of housing.
The zero step entry and the twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
So if we just cut D, oh, sorry.
The diversity of housing, so we have the definition of diversity of housing as.
You're going to have to speak up about it.
The definition of diversity of housing, what is it? We have three, three criteria, correct?
It's a number of bedrooms, a price and two or three styles.
I mean, uh, this is, I mean, it's not about form based code or anything. If you can, at this point, especially maybe we would like to improve more than one architect or something like that where it becomes more actually diverse, not just like, um, cause the, I mean, the houses that we see, they're not really diverse, I mean, architecturally speaking. So that's why if there's some, some way to, to do that, that's.
I think it would be very.
I would rule that out of scope in that we just, you know, this is final edits, you know, we're, I don't think we're trying to, I mean, maybe in a future year, you know? But we have, by the way, back to the more.
Just to address Alan's point, I, I, I believe that's beyond the scope of the town's ability to tell an applicant, you have to go out and hire more than one architect. I, I, I think, I, I, that's not, um, you have to understand, everything that you're doing here has to be under, as far as the zoning act and the purpose of the zoning act. And I think to require somebody.
Maybe that's not the right way of thinking about it, but just, I mean, I don't think we get diverse housing. I mean, that's, that's, I don't know.
But now that we get design review, like.
Yeah, people have been talking about as a whole separate initiative, design review. And, but that's a future.
Well, I mean, you could fit it under the.
Thing. But I don't think we're going to try to squeeze, what I'd rather not do is try to shoehorn some stuff in here at the last minute into this thing.
I'm just curious about C, especially given what you actually found in the long range plan about new, new family houses and workforce housing. Like, I guess if I'm a developer and I read C, I'm like, okay, great, that's pretty easy to do. It's pretty easy to meet that. And it's, and those can, those might not be affordable by any stretch of the imagination. Like, they, this could fit into that upper category of price range that, you know, we're seeing being proposed. That's just my reaction to C.
See, I think it speaks to this issue of diversity in terms of accommodating people with accessibility issues that we don't currently have.
With the fact that sixty-five percent of our population is twenty thirty.
Right, and accessibility isn't strictly age necessarily, it can be other things too.
Maybe I may, but like if I, if I'm an aging person in this town, there's no way I'm selling my house because I can't afford to buy anyone.
Well, you can't afford to stay in your house because of the property.
Yeah, inaccessible.
So.
You pit off your mortgage at that point.
Okay, back to this. I mean, we, I think we could, are we okay with striking D now?
Yes.
In terms of whether we want to have anything else in here. Yeah, so I guess Haley was questioning C. Are, are people okay with C other than her?
Yes.
I am. I'm okay with C, but, all right. And then we have updated the purpose now to reflect that we are, you know, this is incorporating green building practices. So do we want to provide an incentive related to that? And if we do, is it something crisp that we can stick in here and be confident about going on to the warrant tonight?
I personally see net zero used all the time and I don't think that is like, you know, a different language by any means and it's pretty straightforward in my mind, but.
But is green building design, is that the fulfillment of green building design?
May I suggest that just as we've done with recent projects, we expect, um, to take in energy efficiency, no matter whether they're getting a bonus density or not. I, I, I go back to your point that we don't need to have an incentive, rather that's a, that is a requirement.
It's a new baseline.
It's a, that's a baseline. Yeah. That would be my view.
Yeah, but net zero is not the baseline. It's just green building practices.
Right. So do we want to give a bonus for net zero construction?
So you're going to get trees chopped down if you go for net zero? The only, the only way you can produce your.
Right, your other places you could produce green power.
Mr. Fusion on our, on our countertops is going to be.
Okay. So, or do we then just leave it with A, B, and C? And take it to the warrant like that?
That would be my recommendation.
And so just to be clear, the like amount of bonus is discretionary.
It's left open. It's left open. Except for, yeah, yeah, it's in all cases it is. Yeah. All right.
Mr. Chair, may I explain my letter from last time or so make a suggestion?
I thought, uh, well, I think we were planning to have the, the public comment period at the end of the meeting.
I'd be like, yes, that's totally fine with you. I just, I might want to explain what I missed in the letter before. In case you wanted to consider it.
I mean, we, we did get the letter.
Say it for the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Any other recommendations on this? Are we okay with everything else?
Should we vote on these?
Yeah, let's vote as, while we got it in front of us.
Should we revisit the letter though? I guess I feel bad.
You can.
If, if you want to.
On them, but you're not done with this one. Still need to do the explanation.
Oh, the explanation. Okay.
Yeah. So, um, Marcia threw this together and, um, as I noted to the board, I, I think that this is, um, a very, you know, this is going to be one of the bigger presentations. And if you tried to explain everything that's going on in this explanation, the town report would become, you know, even longer.
Well, that was my reaction to Kate's was it was pretty long. So.
You want to cut it back or are you just grabbing?
We're in this language. Okay.
At the very end.
From ZBA to planning board, I think, um.
So if there are other points, um, I know, um, Kate had, um, sent me an email. I don't know if you wanted to read through this and then decide what the board wants to add, or you want me to read it?
Um, what do you think about that one please? Is that, can I ask Elizabeth what she thinks about it?
Sure.
Do you think it's, um, cause I, when I wrote it, I helped. So when I saw your email, I was like, I was supposed to write that and I never did. Then I wrote it. Then I saw that you had started, Marcia had started one. So do you think that we should just start with Marcia's at this point or do you think?
I, I think if you're going to have a conversation, I need to actually read it.
Oh, sorry, you haven't.
No, I mean, I, but you're having a conversation with just me and the rest of the board has no idea what you're talking about, so.
Okay.
Do we read it?
I'm happy to read it, but do you, do you like reading stuff?
You can, or you can put it on the screen if you have it, like in your email.
Well, no, it's in my email and it'll be very difficult for me to connect to.
Okay. I can read it. Um, hold on, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll read. The, the provision of the existing zoning bylaw allows for planned residential development as an alternative pattern of residential land development by special permit. From that which is allowed as of right under the zoning bylaw or subdivision provisions. On qualifying properties of minimum size, the PRD allows for residential development of greater density offset by commensurate preservation of open space on the site. The planning board recommends certain changes to the bylaw to provide more incentive for applicants to propose more aggressive, energy efficient, sustainable design. While striking a balance to make sure developers still have incentives to choose this option over a nasobright subdivision. Make the permitting process more efficient by moving the special permit granting authority to the planning board with the existing scope.
Where, it should be where the existing.
Oh, where the existing scope of review is located. And to provide clarification for how wetlands are defined for the purpose of calculating the minimum open space requirement for PRDs.
Elizabeth, can you just have more energy diverse like?
Okay, sorry.
The content is so. I'm hearing her.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Wait, I'll do, I'll do.
More specifically, the proposed changes include, one, provide continuity of review and approval by making the planning board the special permit granting authority for PRDs. Currently, the planning board conducts a comprehensive review process with the applicant before it makes a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals who issues the permit. The proposed changes would make the planning board the special permit granting authority. Two, makes PRDs subject to site plan review criteria listed under section eleven, point eight, point five of the bylaw. These criteria are very helpful in site plan review and are as useful and applicable to PRDs. They will allow for a more developed, more formal consideration of such factors as impacts on adjacent properties, impacts on traffic, end of town infrastructure, and natural resource preservation enhancement.
If I may just interject. I think the good news is you've written the presentation on this. But I think what we need is a really succinct thing for the, the actual warrant. Which would, you, just pulling out some of the, I mean, I think we need to say we're switching authority from, from ZBA to planning.
Well, in fact.
We're, you just mentioned one there about, of using the site plan review principles. That we are incorporating this, this one element, this community criteria from the long range plan.
So do you want to start, do you want to pare down the bullets of my one, two, three, four, or do you not even want to start with my stuff?
No, no, I think we can start with your stuff.
So maybe just pare down one, two, three, four.
And I had a pretty concrete suggestion. I would cut sentence two out of your paragraph.
Um, so this didn't go to the whole board. That's why I'm reading it.
Okay.
And, uh, so.
I hate that way this works.
Three, introducing a new sustainability criterion in the site design criteria listed in the PRD provisions of the bylaw to encourage such measures as energy efficiency, low impact design. Um, and you actually don't have greenhouse gas emissions. Four, provide clarification on how wetlands are defined for the purpose of calculate the minimum open space requirement. This does not change the intent of the calculation provides a technical clarification to explicitly include wetlands which are jurisdictional as isolated vegetated wetlands under the U.S. Clean Water Act.
And I don't have the density bonus, so that would be five, I guess. Sorry.
So what I'd like to suggest is that I can, um, take, um, what the, the revisions that the board has made to the bylaw tonight. And just make a bulleted list of those revisions. A more succinct bulleted list of the revisions. So as Kate said, um, the planning board is a special permit granting authority, requiring site plan approval. The incorporation of the density bonuses, um, dealing with the square footage and the zero step entry, um, the incorporation of new sustainable design requirements. And incorporation of low impact design, um, energy calculation.
And the tree.
And the tree preservation by law. Yeah.
I think that's, that approach makes sense.
Are you, are you going to keep either of these bullets in yellow?
They'll be assumed by what she's got.
I just want to make sure. There's just a couple of type bows, but I'm not going to bother with it.
No, I would, I would make it a more succinct bulleted list.
Good.
But do you want to at least incorporate that first paragraph?
I thought the first paragraph was, was good.
Or Kate's first paragraph? I would say, well, I was going to suggest cutting the second sentence from it because it's getting into.
Oh, on qualifying properties of minimum size.
Yeah, minimum size, you know, I, I think that it's basically more than, more info that we need.
More than needed.
Okay.
Just before we move on from PRDs, maybe this was talked about last time, but I'm not sure if the letter that she's referring to, um, that we received isn't related to the tree bylaw or not. Um, did we talk about this?
Last time.
We did.
Yeah.
So we addressed any comment related to her letter?
Well, not all of them. I mean, what we did was we took, uh, I think the, the part that was, kind of the scope that we had previously discussed, which was really, um, enshrining the applicability of the tree preservation bylaw to PRDs and also in interpreting it for the sake of the PRD because, you know, once we're the permit granting authority, the timing is a little different. Making sure that those were clear. But then in terms of additional green initiatives beyond that, I think that the board should prioritize those and do them, but that, that's sort of beyond the scope of what we had previously discussed. So that, that's, that was at least my summary of the conversation last time. Yeah. Yeah, I'd recommend a specimen tree bylaw, for example. I, but I think it would be general, not just PRDs. Anyway, we, are we now in a position to vote on the?
That would be great. I would, um, like to at least have, um, one planning board member review.
Sure.
The final draft, the final.
Yeah, so we need a form of, uh, we need a form of motion very similar to the last one. I mean, we've motioned to approve, to, to submit this.
Warrant article was amended and authorized one member to, um, review the final submission.
Okay. And that member would be? Kate?
I accept.
Okay. Any second to that motion?
So who moved it?
I moved it.
Okay.
Haley's second. Haley second. All in favor? Okay. All right, let's go to the next one. Should we just go down through the list here as it's listed on the website? Prohibited uses. I don't think that we have any. Oh, yeah. There's no further changes on prohibited uses, so we just need to.
Note from the last meeting, you decided not to try and incorporate.
Right.
Warrant bold. So there were no.
Right.
Hopefully there were any changes to this one.
Okay, so motion? I move that we submit this article.
As drafted.
Zoning bylaw four, four seven one, prohibited uses as drafted.
Matt, that sounds just like a motion.
Yes, it is. Okay, all those in favor? All right. Next one, hammerhead lot. Do I hear a motion?
I move to.
Oh. Do you have something changed?
Yeah, no, the only thing I would change is it should, zoning bylaw six, three, two, and six, three, two, two, hammerhead lot. Should be after. Right after six, three, two, two, it should say hammerhead lot.
I see, okay.
I move to add this article to the warrant as amended.
Second it?
All in favor? Okay. Next one. Accessory dwellings. Last time we struck some stuff from this, but.
Yep, and I did have one item of discussion. Once I find it, sorry. So in here you have the maximum size. The additional dwelling unit shall occupy no more than seven hundred and fifty gross square feet.
Yeah.
Elsewhere in the bylaw, when it references, like under the max FAR, that excludes basements, open and screened porches.
Yeah.
And decks.
So you wanna add that terminology?
I'm, and it's a question, does the board want to add that?
Well, if the definition.
Seven hundred and fifty square feet, gross square feet would be.
Right, no, we don't care about decks and porches, I think.
But you're saying the term gross square feet does include or does not include?
The term gross square, gross.
Area.
Floor, yeah, what is it, gross floor, gross square feet, what is it?
Those gross floor area.
Gross square feet. So it should be.
We use gross.
It should match whatever the current definition is, so that might change too. In the current.
I'm bringing my bylaws tonight.
Seven hundred and fifty square foot accessory dwelling with a thousand square foot. It's gross floor, okay, so it's gross floor area should be.
Gross floor area, there you go.
Which the sum of the horizontal areas of the floor of a building measured from the exterior face of exterior wall or from the center line of a wall separating two buildings, not including any space where the floor-to-ceiling height is less than six feet eight inches. So that includes.
Includes a basement.
Includes a basement if the ceiling height's over six eight.
Okay.
So that was my question, whether the board wants to.
I think we might change it to, yeah, to that.
Shall occupy.
Seven, no more than seven hundred and fifty.
Square feet of gross floor area?
Of gross floor area excluding, you want to exclude basements, open and screened porches?
Sure.
Well, wouldn't that be comma, which excludes those things? Because isn't, isn't the definition means that it's excluded?
No, the definition is included.
Oh, then why, then it seems like it should be a different term, but okay, so go ahead.
It's, it's so.
I mean, because what do we say in the FAR bylaw? It's the exact same language.
Okay.
That mirrors the FAR, FAR.
Okay, we just wanna use the exact term, yeah.
Just seems like there should be another, like.
There should be a term for that, shouldn't there? No, no, you cannot use living area.
You're right, but I mean, like another term, if gross square, gross floor area includes those things, there should be another term of area that excludes them, but that's okay.
Right, but that's okay, as long as we make it parallel, we're fine.
But we're saying we're okay with seven hundred and fifty square feet plus a basement, the porch.
If it's less than, the height is less than.
So I was just bringing up the point, trying to be consistent. Under six, two, thirteen, maximum floor area ratio, it is total gross floor area excluded from the gross floor area in the residence districts are basement, opened or screened porches, decks, and accessory structures with no permanent foundation are less than a hundred square feet in area.
And that seems to be the definition of gross floor area in the residential districts.
So it's the definition of gross floor area is what I read previously. It's exterior wall.
Right.
Exterior wall excluding area, and anything has a ceiling height over six eight. That's the definition of gross floor area. You can leave it as gross floor area or if you want it to be consistent with the max FAR, you can exclude from that seven hundred and fifty square feet basements, opened and screened porches.
I would think on an accessory dwelling, the basement wouldn't even be exclusively part of the accessory dwelling in most cases.
It can be, it's um.
Is this by right or special permit, sorry?
I'm sorry, what?
This is by right.
This is by right?
This is by right.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, so that's the only thing I wonder about, like.
So do we, we could be conservative and just say seven hundred and fifty gross square feet, period?
Well, it would be no more than seven hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area.
Of gross floor, yeah, and that would be the conservative approach. But I can tell you that, I mean, on most residences, you, you could interpret the basement as being common or not, you know, exclusive to the accessory dwelling. And same thing with a porch, you know, it could be. So I, I don't think it's gonna make a big difference either way.
Perfect, that was my question.
All right, so any other comments on this? So can I get a motion?
I make a motion to submit as amended, or we're not amending this, right?
Yeah, no, there is an amendment, yeah.
As amended for the warrant.
Okay. Any seconds to this, Alan, seconds?
Sorry, one quick question.
Discussion, we can have a discussion, yes.
The last sentence before the explanation, or take any other action relative there to.
That is just a standard.
Standard.
Okay, so that's, that's there.
That's a bylaw warrant article.
Yep, okay, sorry, I didn't notice.
But I, I will also, one question that the board asked last time. In here there was the minimum of three hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah, and that's been struck.
And after talking with Marcia and the building commissioner and the public health director, the only requirement under the building code is that. It's seven, seventy square feet. The building code requires seventy square feet for habitable space for cooking, sleeping, living, and excludes hallways, bathrooms, and closets.
Now that's a tiny house.
We were all very comfortable with striking the three hundred and fifty square feet and not trying to incorporate the seventy square feet because nobody's gonna build an accessory dwelling.
Even Thoreau's cabin was bigger than that. Yeah.
It's a legal nonconformity.
Okay.
All right, fairs, bazaars.
Do you wanna vote?
Oh, sorry. Well, no, we had discussion, now we're ready to vote? All in favor? Okay. Fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers and dances. Philanthropic organizations have been added.
There were no other changes.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we submit this for inclusion in the warrant?
As written.
As written.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Next one. Relief from parking.
Um, there was. I don't, I don't think there were any changes to this one either.
Recall any. Okay.
Don't recall, but.
Yeah, motion.
I move that we, this is relief from parking, seven, seven, two, twelve, in the warrant article as written.
Second. All right, Haley, or? Okay, all in favor? Okay. We're getting through it. Throw depot map warrant article. I move that we submit this warrant article on adjusting the warrant zoning map to the, for the town meeting warrant as written.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Next one, two families.
The only change to this one was.
The common wall.
No, no. At the end, you had originally had a minimum of three hundred and fifty square feet, so I just, I deleted that as well to be similar to the accessory dwelling.
Okay. The dwelling units or any additions to create an additional dwelling unit in an existing single-family dwelling shall share a common floor or wall. So does that mean that the dwelling units themselves must share a common floor or town?
That's what I'm reading.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading too.
The dwelling units or additions.
Yeah.
To create the additional dwelling.
Yeah.
So yes, I'm reading that, that they have to share a common wall.
Yeah.
That, that's correct, right?
Well, you're touching on, do we consider that distinct from garages?
Right.
A garage.
It's living space.
Is it a dwelling unit?
Yeah, I would think, I, I would think that the dwelling unit includes the garage.
Yeah, elsewhere, when we talk about dwelling, we're talking about the whole enchilada.
Okay, I just think of dwelling unit.
No, dwelling unit would be the whole thing.
The whole enchilada, okay, so it would still allow garage to garage.
So here's where, if you, if you think about other projects that you've recently reviewed, you had a, a dwelling unit and this garage faced this way, and it was a duplex, and you had this dwelling unit, and it was garage to garage was the connection, but this garage faced that way. So my, my reason where I don't think you need to further try to refine this issue in this bylaw is that this is by special permit.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that.
Somebody submits a special permit.
Yeah, 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 but the four garages together, we're gonna say.
You have to make all the other findings.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Under the special permit criteria and.
I yield, okay.
So.
I think the bulleted list would read better if you didn't use semicolons at the end of each one, but that is, that is a very picky thing.
Nope, nothing personal, I agree.
Okay, so then you can move.
I move that we add this warrant article, add this article to the warrant as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
You're done.
And we have gone through that list. All right, so I don't know. I think we could probably skip liaison reports and staff updates, perhaps?
Is there anything exciting from the staff?
Anything more exciting than usual, I should say, there always is.
There's a big turnout at Green New Deal.
Oh, yeah, sure. What was that?
I went to the Green New Deal Town Hall the other night and I was like standing remotely in the overflow room. There was like over five hundred people there at the marquee event. And I missed the very beginning, but Acton did mention that they are working on a net zero elementary school, which I'm just hearing more and more about in, you know, Lincoln, Lexington, Acton, like. Something to think about as we attend our middle school design planning.
CPC is, is done for the year.
Congratulations.
Okay.
We're done until February.
You're done until February?
Okay, so then it's time to open for public comment?
Yeah, thank you. Honey Gale was sixty-two, press could do it. I didn't see in this version that I copied from the website this morning how the, 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 the enshrinement of the bylaw that you decided to include, they kind of, the documentation part is not here. I think it's not, I mean, maybe, maybe if you have a different version, but I just took this out from the web today.
The section, the one, seven, twenty version?
It says January seven, and it's, I thought it was ten point four point one point two, which is not much of a.
It has section H under ten, four, one, two, that's.
That's right.
Existing tree inventory is required under the tree preservation bylaw?
But it does not add the portion that you said you had decided to add about documentation of how it will be met. No, I, I, I may have misunderstood what you said on that, or you may have misunderstood.
Well, I do recall there being two things. What?
My letter had three things.
Right, but there were two that we said we were looking at. And Elizabeth, I thought that you had. Is it maybe elsewhere in here? Because we had reviewed your letter.
Yes.
And then we had looked at two things, I'm sorry, the late hour, I'm trying to recall the details. And I'm wondering if maybe it was just a rules and regulations aspect that maybe doesn't need to be in the bylaw itself. We did not adopt the signage. Sorry, I'm still trying to find the relevant letter.
When was it discussed?
At our last meeting.
On the twenty-sixth?
My, my impression was from watching the video was that you did not adopt my suggestion to include other trees as mentioned.
Right, the full tree inventory, right.
And I would like to explain about that in a bit, but, and that you did, you did think it was a good idea to put something about documenting how the applicant might meet the tree bylaw for the trees that it applies to. Am I wrong?
But that's the tree inventory, I believe, that's cited.
The inventory is just the inventory and they don't, that doesn't necessarily include a plan of we will keep these trees, we will cut those, but we will replace them or we'll pay this, whatever it takes.
It's, there's gonna be a narrative, there's gonna be a little bit of a narrative.
No, but I think that, that.
I, I just thought you agreed to it, I'm not just, if you didn't, that's fine. I'm just wanting to clarify what you did or didn't.
Like the idea is that we get the information on the existing trees within the, that name, within the buildable area, but for, we're talking about within the PRD.
PRD, there will always be a landscape plan.
No, that's, that's the second, that's, that's, that's the other item. Yeah, I, 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 the, the, what I, what I was requesting for the tree preservation bylaw, item H, is different than what I was also suggesting for other trees. So I was just, at this point, I was just noting that the way it is written in item H, it does not say anything about how they, their explanation of which you, I thought you agreed to, but I mean, if you don't agree, that's fine.
I agree. So if the, if the board would like to go back and revisit the PRD bylaw as far as making an additional revision, is that something the board would like to do since you already voted on it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, um, I think it'd be, uh, very easy just to change item H to, um, as part of the develop, let me finish, please. Um, development plans consisting of, of, um. And it's under the, the tree bylaw would be, um, a. I lost where the wording is. The exact wording is a tree protection and mitigation plan as required under the tree preservation bylaw, um.
I, I thought that's what we had said last time, or something like that.
I, it might have been, something like that, but, um, so what that would mean is that as part of their development plan package, um, they would basically be submitting a tree preservation and.
Basically, they'd be conforming to the, the intent of the bylaw, you know, that.
Included in their PRD application. Correct. Yeah. The requirements of the tree protection bylaw would be, um, as far as the plan and showing the trees to be saved, trees to be removed, the fencing and all of that would be, um, included as part of the PRD.
Okay, but let's let Tanya finish her public comments before we take this back up.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I will explain why, um, I was talking about the other two requests, just so you know why that was. And there is also one other question, uh, I have here that I just noticed. Uh, under ten point four point three, it says, nat-, uh, natural resources commissions report their recommendations, and says including at least column, and then it doesn't say what those are.
Let's see. Ten, four.
Ten point four point three.
Yeah, that looks like a formatting mistake. I mean, there was no intent to change that portion of the bylaw, but.
No, but.
It clearly, there's some text missing. I mean, try, kind of look at here.
That's because you're not changing any of the text under ten, four, three, one, ten, four, three, two.
So it's just for the, but I thought that we're replacing it in the entirety?
You're only changing ten, four, three. You are, you are not replacing the bylaw in its entirety, no.
But.
You are only replacing sections that are amended.
Changes are shown bold. I guess.
The warrant article is drafted so that the following sections read as follows.
I see. Okay, so.
You are not deleting in its entirety.
Okay, good, then that's.
So that's why it.
It wouldn't appear.
The warrant article only.
It's for the sake of brevity.
Shows the sections that are changing and not sections that aren't changing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because the, the minute you delete a bylaw in its entirety and adopt a new bylaw, the attorney general will go through and evaluate.
The entire bylaw.
Entire bylaw, whether you meant to change something or not.
Okay.
So you, you could have had a very old bylaw and something works for you, but now, you know.
Okay.
As of that point, may I, may I suggest that in the, in the final written version for town meeting, you do include whatever those are, in case somebody wants to suggest an amendment, so that the entire, so that the public can see what the whole deal is.
So typically what the board does as far as your handouts for town meeting, you would have the existing bylaw
Mm-hmm.
and then a, a full version of the, of the amended bylaw, so that people can see.
So we'd have a handout?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So that's typically what happens when there's significant changes, you've.
I mean, cause it actually ends up being publishing costs. I mean, it's printing costs for the town in the end. Okay.
I mean, so, okay, so, so my other two, so the, the points that you did not want to include, I just wanted to explain. Uh, I heard during your discussion for the signage that you mentioned that if the planning board becomes the permitting authority, there will be better, uh, notification of the Butters, because if, every hearing will be a public hearing. Um, and that's fine, uh, I have two things for that. One is that may not happen. I mean, the planning board may not be, I mean, there might be an amendment, that people say, no, it's not the zoning board of appeals. But the reason I was, um, requesting a signage, um, item is, was so that the entire neighborhood, not just the Butters, could be aware that there is a PRD being proposed there, there is, which will affect the entire neighborhood in the long run. Uh, so, and, so that all the neighbors, all the interested public, even from other parts of town, would know about it and, and i- in, in a timely manner before this proceeds. So, so that was my suggest, signage suggestion. Um, because it's not just something that concerns the Butters alone. And the, as for the other one, for, um, mention of all large trees, and I left that diameter open, um, it's because specimen trees are not the, which you mentioned, are not the only case where you might think, or the public might think, is might need to be preserved. It is more in order to give some validity to the planning board or to the permitting authority, uh, that, uh, the existing trees are, are a vital and valuable part of the landscape that is being considered, and that along with the landscape plan, it's good to know what is being removed, what is staying, or what may be important to preserve as a wildlife corridor, for example, not just as a specimen tree. So, um, I mean, when I was on the tree preservation subcommittee, there was some discussion about, uh, leaving out subdivisions, for example, because with subdivisions, it was said the planning board would have some say on what trees to preserve. It was also said by the, uh, I think both by the town planner and by the planning board at the time, that that also needed improvement, the subdivision rules, but, um, so, so my, my idea was just to include there just a validation that all these other trees exist too, and therefore they are like worth keeping in mind, without requiring anything, without like expanding the bylaw or anything at this stage. So that's why I was mentioning that.
Okay.
I saw, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, something else about the, uh, when you were discussing for two forty, about the electric versus specified electric versus not. Um, uh, what I was thinking as you were speaking was that in the future, there are other, uh, technologies one may want to leave the, uh, option open for those, and that may be a reason not to specify, just. I just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Uh, Josh Patel, three nine seven, so very nice. Um, I don't know if it's subjective comment or a question on Main Street PRD that you bid, when you're talking about the sales price and those ranges.
Yeah.
And you went back with the million five being affordable?
No.
Sorry?
Not a million five being affordable, just the average, the average recent, recent new construction price.
That was a little bit of a threshold you were using to judge whether these would be affordable or diverse. I'm curious, why not use dollars per square foot as the standard? That way you can actually kind of judge without taking the second half of size into account, right? Cause that way you're standardizing the size. Cause these could be smaller homes, and which is maybe why.
Well, that's why we have separate square footage criteria as well as dollar criteria.
But when you're looking at the diversity, and we're talking about geez, I think somebody made a point, it depends on the mixture. When you're looking at a range, you have one house at the low end and a bunch at ninety percent.
Yeah.
The high end. If you did it on a per square foot basis, wouldn't that help normalize your comparison? I'm curious why you didn't take that into account?
Well, it's not that we're some, per se, looking for houses that are, that's.
Yeah, maybe we, maybe we should have a discussion outside.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not talking about fourteen forty. We're not, but it's, I don't think we're looking for houses that are less expensive on a per square foot basis. In fact, what we're looking for is mechanisms that make it, uh, and, and make it economically viable for developers to build houses that are less expensive, and, and realtors pretty much ha- price houses based upon square footage. So what we're looking for is actually driving small, smaller houses in development.
Very important.
Okay.
And then on the standards part, where you go through a list of standards, where there's the discussion about the time of town finances.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is it a requirement that developers include some assumptions in their application? All that impact?
No, we have to, we provide that.
I'm sorry?
We provide that.
So I'm listing of the standards as something you provide to developers?
So a rec, part of a recommendation letter.
Oh, they don't have to include it in their application?
No.
Oh, thank you.
All right, any other public comment?
Are you going to redo the, the part that you agreed to?
We, we need to, we need to re-vote. Unless there's any further public comment, it's what we would move to. Okay.
So that would be to, um, further amend the PRD bylaw to, um, change item ten, four, one, two, H to say tree protection and mitigation plan as required under the tree preservation bylaw. I think that was it.
Right.
Okay.
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
Let's make a motion to, what, to reconsider?
A motion to reconsider, to amend and then resubmit the warrant article for the planned residential development bylaw amendment to add the phrase.
Well, to change the wording of item ten.
Ten, ten, four, as you have.
Ten, four, one, two.
As you've stated.
H.
Okay.
A second, that motion.
All right. All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
All right. The meeting is adjourned.